Calling to order, the meeting of the Stevens Pointe New Year's School Board. Roll call and verification of a quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Vaxton?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Here.
Mr. Presley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
All members are present and we have a quorum.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda. There are a couple of changes. Seven D has been just removed. And eight B has been pulled and will be voted on separately.
What was that, seven E?
Nope, seven D.
Thank you. And what was the one after that?
And then eight B.
Eight B, okay, thank you.
Has been pulled. Any other changes to the agenda? The approval for the two principal approvals are under consent agenda, so I just want you to be aware of that before we vote on a consent agenda. Everything's at your place for the second. So if you want to look that over before we go through consent agenda. That is it. I need a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
No move.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, I have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a very special set of recognitions to do this evening, and they're all one set. And so we're real pleased. And I think if the coaches and the volunteers come up when we announce students' names, that would be great. Okay, I see Gail back there, I see Chris. Where's Tina? Tina back there, right there. There you go, Tina. Okay, great. So we have many, and I'm glad to see that many of our students or student athletes are here tonight. So what we're going to do is recognize our special student athlete Olympians who participated in sectionals a couple of weeks ago and this weekend performed at State. And we got those results quickly from Tina, and we're going to recognize them tonight, which is almost a record, being able to turn that around. So this is really great. So what we're going to do is by sport, and then we have certificates for, I know there are some student athletes that doubled up in competitions. So in soccer, our team placed first place in Green Bay on May the 3rd in the Milwaukee Wave Division, and they qualified for State. And then at State, our team took second place, which is outstanding. And that's really to be congratulated. So if, I don't know if all of these student athletes are here, but we'll see. Alyssa Alvarado? Alyssa, come on up. So you stay right up here when you get this. All right, we'll try to do this the right way. Anastasia Barnes? Mrs. Vaxton is going to give you your award. Kevin Bean?
No.
No? All right. Daniel Cook?
No.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Cassie Mikowski?
No.
All right. Andrew Patterson?
No.
All right. Scott Renford?
All right, Scott.
Nice job, Valerie. So let's give it up for our soccer team. What we're going to do is just have you over there to the side. Can you do that? Just stand over there by the table. Right there, be great. So we're going to have you all up here at once. There, thanks, Chris. Okay, the next competition, oh, I'm sorry, and the coaches for soccer were Chris Dubek and Luke Olson. Is Luke here tonight? Luke's right there, okay. If you guys want to come up here, you can stand up here and be embarrassed too, that's Hankus, I didn't want to mispronounce it. Come on over. So we're going to get a picture. Let's give it up. fine. Wonderful, okay. All right. Heidi, if you can, if Abigail, if you could have your athletes stand over there, that'd be great. Next we have swimming.
Patterson.
Okay. The swimming team competed on April the 19th in Oshkosh.
Patterson for soccer.
We're not done. What's that?
Andrew just got good for soccer.
Logan Hassan-Harrell took first in the 25-meter freestyle swimming, and he took first in Oh, come on, who did? Andrew, Andrew, come on up, Andrew. Congratulations, Andrew. There you go. the State. Sharp glasses too, buddy. Nice job, Logan. All right, so next we have track. So there are a lot of people in track. So the competition in Merrill that qualified for State was first, second, or third. Way to go. So first of all, is Nick Ashton here? And Logan also took second, it's in the Oshkosh sectional in the 25-meter backstroke,
No.
Okay. Well, Nick took first in the long standing, in standing long jump at sectionals, and then he took third in State. Sam Byer? but he came back to win State. All right, Sam took third in the 50-meter run in sectionals, but second in the State
Whoa.
And then we have Cynthia Manning. competition. Evan Churney? Cynthia here? All right, Evan, come on up. Okay, well, just to let you know, Cynthia took first in both the 50-meter freestyle That's it, Evan. Making your way. Hey, you're like me, holding them down, yeah? and 25-meter backstroke in sectionals, and she took third in both of those events at There you go. Mrs. Vaxton's going to help you out there. State. And his coach is Gail Hints? So that's outstanding. Hold on, hold on just a second, we're going to get you in. Gail? Okay. Ready? Kodak moment there for everybody. Great, wonderful. Okay, so you're going to step aside there. Well, Evan took first in the softball throw in sectionals and second in the 25-meter walk. And he did, he did first in the 25-meter walk in State and second in the softball Just hold on a second. Did you get it? Did you get it, Dan?
Yeah, I got it.
throw. Okay, great. So congratulations. So the coaches were Heidi Wiesensel, is that correct? Then we have Deion Gebhardt.
Wiesensel.
Is Deion here? Heisen, I say that again, Heidi? Okay, well, Deion took third in the 100-meter run in sectionals, and then he took seventh
Wiesensel.
Wiesensel, come on up. And Abigail? at State. So we'll give these to Gail and Tina. Make sure that the students get them. Is Tyler Glodowsky here? Tyler, come on up, Tyler. Good for you. So if you want to turn around a little bit, okay? Big smile over here at the camera. Can you look up? There you go. Turn this around, you can hold it like that. There you go. Okay, so we're going to call up the coaches in just a second. Tyler took first in the 100-meter run at sectionals, second in the long, the standing long jump, third in softball throw, and he took first in the 100-meter run in State. So are you the fastest person in Wisconsin? Is Troy Nowack here? Okay, is Victoria Pazuski here? All right. Julianne Przak, how do you pronounce it?
Jack.
One, two, three, here we go. There you go. Nice job. You want to turn around and look at the camera there, Julianne? Turn your, hey, there you go. You've got it. Big smile. Wonderful. Julianne took second place in the softball throw in sectionals, but she's the State champion in softball throw.
Yes.
And is Brad Ziyevi here?
No.
Okay, well, Brad took second in the shot put, third in standing long jump at State, and he took second in the shot put in State, in sectionals, and second in State, the shot put. So we do want to recognize the track coaches. Pam Fait, is Pam here? Pam, come on up. Gail Hints is here. Gail's right here, right there. Connor here? Connor Simmers? Connor? Okay, is Carol here? Carol, I'm not going to even try.
Snadjeski.
It's not so hard. It's snadjeski.
Catherine Studitsky, is Catherine here?
No.
No? Okay, and Linda Weersbaugh. Is Linda here? Come on up. Appreciate it. Okay, so if we can all turn around and look at Mr. Bamowski there. Why don't you come on over here, Julie, right over there near. If you want to step down this way, I need the coaches to do the same. I'll be very, I don't have to be in this picture. There you go. Look at the camera, look at the camera over there.
Put it down.
Okay. All right, so let's give it up for us. We've done this now for several years, we're going to do it again. I emailed Tina and the group. Why aren't you up here?
She doesn't want to be up here.
Let's go.
Great. So what we're going to do is at the opening of school kickoff, right, with a thousand people, plus, we're going to have you come up on stage wearing your shirts and your medals, and we're going to recognize coaches and student athletes in the same way. So congratulations, you did us proud, and we're very, very, very proud of your accomplishments. Congratulations, you guys have a great summer, okay? Now, if you can do, the board members would like to meet you, so you're going to come right this way. You're going to go first, and start this way, and just going to shake their hand.
Congratulations. You've done this before, congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Congratulations. Here we go. Good job. Good job, buddy.
I could see it, I could almost smell it when you hit to them. Snadjeski. Good job, and thank you, guys. Good job.
Congratulations, okay. There you go, watch those glasses. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Got you guys?
We'll see you in August.
Good job.
Congratulations, Jeff. Good job. You're welcome. Congratulations, thanks to you. Good jobs, right best, on two feet. Congratulations.
You started here. No, you're welcome. No, it's okay. I think so, I tried. What's your first name?
All right, congratulations.
Was it the mother and the child?
Thank you. I'm going to give you my gourds. We also have a donation, and I'd like to report, Boston School Forest received $300 from the McKinley School PTO. The district is very appreciative of the contributions by not only the McKinley PTO, but all PTOs this year.
That moves us onto public, oops, sorry, that moves us to public comments. At the moment, we have a policy that's, I think we're asking for five minutes for each person, so for tonight, that's what we're going to go with until we discuss it in policy. And I will just call you in the order that you signed up. Jennifer Buckmaster.
These are things that I didn't know until I looked them up. So for those of you who aren't aware or need a refresher, let me quote from the WISP.k12 website, "The Goals of the School District." Number one, the student achievement goal, prepare each student to be successful through a world-class education. Number two, the human resources goal, prepare each student to be successful with a strategic plan to recruit, employ, develop, retain, and invest in a world-class professional staff with fidelity to the district's core value and mission. Number three, the finance goal, prepare each student to be successful with a strategic plan that maximizes district's finances with fidelity to the district's core value and mission. With that being stated, and considering the information each of you has hopefully received and reviewed in reference to the complaints against the supervisor of transportation, I wonder if you truly believe that these goals are being followed. It is nice to know what the district expects from its staff, but what should the staff expect from those in authority positions in the district? As staff, I expected to be invested in, to be retained, to be valued, and to be treated as an adult and a fellow human being. Being a dedicated employee of the district, I felt that I had the right to know my job was secure in return, that someone who held an authority position over mine was also dedicated to me. To know that I was spied on by people of his inner circle, that my dedicated service meant little to nothing, that I was discriminated against, that the authority figure in question does not value the community and taxpayers' money, and to know that myself, along with my coworkers, have had to suffer unnecessary consequences was just too much to bear. To not know if I would have a job over the summer and again in the fall was extremely stressful and demeaning. To know that one individual who has shown proven favoritism and bias held the fate of my family's welfare and survival in his hands caused me severe anxiety. So on May 20th, while driving my morning route, I realized that I was so consumed by this anxiety that I was distracted to the point of being an unsafe driver. I returned to the bus garage parking lot and had a panic attack deciding what I should do. Under severe distress and while literally hyperventilating, I left a note on the office counter stating my immediate withdrawal from my job I loved. There were three office staff, including the supervisor and three drivers being used in the office present when I did this. The only staff that has shown any concern is someone who was on two days off at the time and wasn't present. This to me proves just how messed up things really are. If you believe that the quote "authority" unquote in question is a quote "world-class" unquote individual that shows professionalism and supports his staff to provide students opportunities for success even on a bus, then I am truly at a loss for words. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
Albert?
I'm Albert Rocco, the immediate past president of the Stevens Pointe New Year Retired Teachers Association, 1824 Gilke Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. At the last regular meeting of school board, you elected school board officers on the first ballot. That is definitely an improvement over your election of board officers a year ago. You made plans to have three committees with the hope that conducting board business would be more, made more speedy, thorough, and perhaps more transparent. You do have another recurring piece of business meriting serious consideration, that is the August 26, 2013, five-page memo, subject Draft Framework for District Staff Morale Plan. You had on the agenda several times, but quite a bit of work on the topic remains undone. Improvements in staff morale would benefit the students, your employees, your constituents, and improve the regard the public has for you as the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Jaclyn Thompson?
I would like to give up my five minutes to Judy Pirag.
Okay. And Judy is next.
I did sign up, so do I get to?
Yes.
They're right here.
Hello, my name is Judy Pirag. I live at 2817 Lindbergh Avenue, and I have worked for the Transportation Department for 27 years. I have enjoyed my job until this year. You have already lost several drivers and educational assistants with a lack of respect towards long-term dedicated employees. The revolving door is already spinning. Employees are taking their retirements early, earlier than they planned. Others are quitting because of stress, intimidation, threats, violations of employees' rights in the hostile environment that has been created. I'm talking about the state and federal laws to protect the rights of employees and employers. I am speaking of the National Labor Relations Act, the Civil Rights, Title VII, equal opportunity, and the Family Medical Leave Act. There are some rules in the administration that this administration has put in their handbooks which are vague and I feel need to be clarified to comply with the laws. They need to give more direction to employees and employers on the rights, the wages, benefits, promotions, job requirements, the grievance process, and much more. When Act 10 was, when we lost Act 10, the administration had time to rewrite the handbooks to cover all these concerns, and I feel they gravely failed at this task. I have seen this, I have read it, I've seen and heard what is happening to your employees. Most of the employees felt helpless, depressed, stressed out, intimidated, discriminated against, and afraid of retaliation and termination. They did not know what to do. To help them, a small group came together and came up with a confidential survey so anyone who wanted to could express their fears and thoughts and concerns. We gathered the information from 41 drivers that decided to speak up. We then sent the information to Artiller Willinger, Don Cack, the Teamsters, and to you, the Stevens Pointe School Board. This was sent in April, and we have not seen or heard any actions on these issues. Also included in the packet was countless documentation to inform you of the injustice and violations of our rights. We did this because we have. Several employees have gone to upper management with complaints, but instead of being looked into, they broke our confidentiality and gave it to our supervisor, and retaliation occurred. We have a driver that is, after ending up in the hospital with a medical problem and upon receiving medical release from his doctor to return to work, was terminated. We have employees that are denied time off for medical reasons, which put their lives and their students' lives and safety in danger. Others are not following doctors' orders in fear of losing their jobs because it required time off. The breach of contract law was broken when they changed our time sheets after we signed them. There are jobs and routes not being posted but awarded to who they choose. The summer school route signup sheet was not posted in the appropriate job posting board, and many drivers have missed it. The March 20th meeting, I quote, "Jobs, routes to be awarded by absenteeism, damage to the buses, how well you get along with others, and me." This came from our supervisor. We have seen favoritism, no consideration for seniority, he even said there is no seniority. At the same meeting, he stated that he was taking away the break room. He removed the chairs, tables, and disconnected the computers, which we access our employee information on and get maps for our routes. Even the school board handbook was removed. Drivers sat on the floor to update their routes, or in some case, the relief drivers to study routes. Even though our break room is now restored, we feel this shows lack of management skills, unprofessionalism, and the power to do what I want, and I quote our supervisor again, "I'm the boss." I need to tell you I have a child with a severe life-threatening condition. I feel discriminated, threatened, and intimidated against because of his special needs from my supervisor. From day one, he held last year's absences against me when he wasn't even there. I would like to point out that my past supervisors accommodated my situation with compassion and care. I have had to file FMLA, and I found human resources does not apply for, apply or distribute FMLA laws legally. I've had to cancel or cut IEP meetings, doctors' appointments, really short because I was not allowed, denied to take time off without having it count against me like other medical has been counted against me. On the day I had to take my child to the emergency room, I missed my midday route. But I made it back from my PM route. I was told by my supervisor, "I should have been a nurse, I should look for other employment, and why can't your husband take care of him?" These things and others have been said to me throughout the whole year. I also have cancer, and it is now worse because I can't take time off for the proper treatment without possibly losing my route or my job like others have. Excuse me. I have received the window liquor bulletins, and I was upset, furious, since I have a special needs child. What kind of person other than a bully says something like this about special needs children? This is inexcusable prejudice and shows very poor judgment for a person in his position. To top it off, there's a lot of other inappropriate prejudiced things being said by our superiors. Finally, we asked this question in our survey. We asked the question out of great concern because we consider all of you like family. If the current transportation supervisor is still your supervisor in the fall, the problems are not resolved, are you considering finding other employment elsewhere? Of the 41 employees who filled out the survey, 29 said yes. Five said no. Seven were unsure and undecided. In closing, I would like to say, as a long-time and dedicated employees, we used to love our jobs. We have lost our safety bonuses, our longevity, our seniority, our job security, our routes, and even the right to choose our routes. When we leave, so does our experience, our dedication, the trust, the faith of the parents and families who have entrusted... anyone who wanted to could express their fears and thoughts and concerns. We gathered the information from 41 drivers that decided to speak up. We then sent the information to Artiller Willinger, Don Cack, the Teamsters, and to you, the Stevens Point School Board. This was sent in April, and we have not seen or heard any actions on these issues. Also included in the packet was countless documentation to inform you of the injustice and violations of our rights. We did this because we have. Several employees have gone to upper management with complaints, but instead of being looked into, they broke our confidentiality and gave it to our supervisor, and retaliation occurred. We have a driver that is, after ending up in the hospital with a medical problem and upon receiving medical release from his doctor to return to work, was terminated. We have employees that are denied time off for medical reasons, which put their lives and their students' lives and safety in danger. Others are not following doctors' orders in fear of losing their jobs because it required time off. The breach of contract law was broken when they changed our time sheets after we signed them. There are jobs and routes not being posted but awarded to who they choose. The summer school route signup sheet was not posted in the appropriate job posting board, and many drivers have missed it. The March 20 meeting, I quote, "Jobs, routes to be awarded by absenteeism, damage to the buses, how well you get along with others, and me." This came from our supervisor. We have seen favoritism, no consideration for seniority. He even said, "There is no seniority." At the same meeting, he stated that he was taking away the break room. He removed the chairs, tables, and disconnected the computers, which we access our employee information on and get maps for our routes. Even the school board handbook was removed. Drivers sat on the floor to update their routes, or in some cases, the relief drivers to study routes. Even though our break room is now restored, we feel this shows lack of management skills, unprofessionalism, and the power to do what I want, and I quote our supervisor again, "I'm the boss." I need to tell you, I have a child with a severe life-threatening condition. I feel discriminated, threatened, and intimidated against because of his special needs from my supervisor. From day one, he held last year's absences against me when he wasn't even there. I would like to point out that my past supervisors accommodated my situation with compassion and care. I have had to file FMLA, and I found Human Resources does not apply for, apply or distribute FMLA laws legally. I've had to cancel or cut IEP meetings, doctors' appointments, really short because I was not allowed, denied to take time off without having it count against me like other medical has been counted against me. On the day I had to take my child to the emergency room, I missed my midday route. But I made it back from my PM route. I was told by my supervisor, "I should have been a nurse, I should look for other employment, and why can't your husband take care of him?" These things and others have been said to me throughout the whole year. I also have cancer, and it is now worse because I can't take time off for the proper treatment without possibly losing my route or my job like others have. Excuse me. I have received the window liquor bulletins, and I was upset, furious, since I have a special-needs child. What kind of person, other than a bully, says something like this about special-needs children? This is inexcusable prejudice and shows very poor judgment for a person in his position. To top it off, there's a lot of other inappropriate prejudiced things being said by our superiors. Finally, we asked this question in our survey. We asked the question out of great concern because we consider all of you like family. If the current transportation supervisor is still your supervisor in the fall, the problems are not resolved, are you considering finding other employment elsewhere? Of the 41 employees who filled out the survey, 29 said yes, 5 said no, 7 were unsure and undecided. In closing, I would like to say, as a longtime and dedicated employees, we used to love our jobs. We have lost our safety bonuses, our longevity, our seniority, our job security, our routes, and even the right to choose our routes. When we leave, so does our experience, our dedication, the trust, the faith of the parents and families who have entrusted to us their long and lifetime drivers, their children to us, their long and lifetime drivers, and the educational assistance to get their children to and from school safely. We ask one last time, please put us on the agenda and help get these issues resolved. Thank you.
I just want the Transportation Department to be aware that there has been a special meeting called, and so transportation will be talked about, even though it didn't get on the agenda.
Karen Adams.
I was giving up my time for Judy in case she ran out.
Okay. That's all I have for public comments. Okay, next we have board comments, but we don't have anyone who has signed up to speak. Legislative update, Jeff said he doesn't have one tonight. Consolidated Task Force update, either Kim or Lisa, do you have an update for us?
Well, I didn't make the last meeting, I was out of town. So if you want to fill in, Lisa?
The only real update was that what's come to light is there's been a lot of misunderstanding as far as the direction of the board, the whole Jackson School. Some of the attendees stated that at prior committees when they did their focus reports, the consolidated, not the consolidated, but the other task force reports, that they were given direction not to include Jackson School because that was already spoken to, and others weren't told that. So it's been making it quite difficult because some of their recommendations were based on false information. So it'll be very interesting to see how the Consolidated Task Force figures out a way to handle this. But we will be meeting again later in the summer after Tom gets some stuff together.
Okay. I'll just say again, I addressed it at the last meeting, there are no restrictions on Jackson School. The board has made no, no decisions regarding that, so there are no restrictions for the Consolidated Task Force. Everything is an option.
If I could just make one comment, I'm not sure where the misunderstanding came from. I know that I served on the Facilities Committee, and that was not ever discussed, that Jackson was off the table. So I don't know which committees or what direction you're saying was given, where it was given, but it certainly wasn't at the Facilities Committee, and I did not miss a meeting.
Oh, no, and that's what I'm saying. Some of the committees were told that, and others weren't. So.
Okay, we have the superintendent's report next.
Just two items I want to highlight. One is the Department of Workforce Development Grant Award that Brigida Altman, our CTE coordinator over at SPAS, worked with a number of businesses and Midstate Technical College. We received $33,000, and it'll go directly to our youth apprenticeship program, and I provided the board and the community with the number of students and the companies that each will be participating in that. Also wanted to let the board know that on June 23, we'll be bringing forward the requested options regarding the contracted custodial services contract. And the only other item, well, two more, I'm sorry. The 2014-15 opening of school employee kickoff is Tuesday, August 26, 8:00 to 10:30 in the SPAS Field House. We hope that all board members can attend. And then the Woodlands Church, who is one of our community partners, attached the results of the 2014 Spring Into Action campaign projects that were accomplished by Woodlands Church. And it's just amazing what this group has done for the district now for the third year in a row, and they've adopted us permanently as the Spring Into Action target. And in addition to all of the work, there were $6,000 of materials donated by the Woodlands Church, as well as a grant to the Woodlands Church for $1,500 for the project from Thrive and Financial. So we want to thank very deeply and sincerely Woodlands Church for all that they've done for the district and apparently will continue to do. And a letter is being sent to Woodlands Church from me on behalf of the district. Last year, I went to two services at the Woodlands Church and spoke to the congregation directly, and Pastor Doug and I decided not to do that this year but to send a letter instead, and every year maybe to do something different regarding our recognition for their work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. On number three, I see that we're working with the Business Council Foundation. I'm curious why the district would be having them collect, and maybe I'm misreading this, funds for our co-curriculars and why it isn't going directly through us.
Well, Bill Christensen, who is Director of the Foundation for the Business Council, approached me with the idea of how are we going to achieve the co-curricular objective underneath the student achievement goal, which is 100% participation by kids 7 through 12, at least one semester, in some kind of co-curricular athletic or activity. As you know, we have about 37% of our students that are free and reduced lunches. We have schools that are up above 50. In fact, we have two elementary schools that are higher than 50%. And Bill felt that this would be a great project for the Business Council to actually tackle. And so he put something down on paper, he and I had a couple of conversations, we brought it to Cabinet, and we then added, based on the conversation at Cabinet, our technology access for kids who also are under the free and reduced situation. So right now, the project is in development. In fact, our goal is not necessarily to have the Portage County Business Council actually acquire the funds or take the contributions that may come in, but it would go to our enrichment fund through the community foundation, which would make it very objective. We didn't feel it appropriate to come into the district, but if such contributions were go to the enrichment fund or a fund within the enrichment fund, that would be the appropriate place for those kind of contributions. So right now, the logistics of all of that are under development, we're having discussions about that, but I wanted to give the board a heads-up about what it is that we're looking at and where we've targeted so far. And I believe, I don't know if I mentioned it in here or not, right now, we're looking at either grade eight or nine for that because it's kind of the beginning of students really wondering about their participation in high school and whether or not we can target kids in one of those grade levels better than we can trying to do K through 12.
So am I correct in, I was under the impression that the district, if we had individuals, families that could not pay their co-curricular activity fees, that the district worked with those families? Is that not true?
No, that is true, but it's not, it's not black and white. We have some families who can pay all of it, we have some families who can pay some of it, we have some families who can pay none of it, and we have some families who are able to on a pay-as-you-go plan, in other words, by monthly. And there are some funds that do help some destitute families participate in co-curriculars. What we're trying to do here is provide a funding mechanism so that at a particular grade level, we can begin to get kids involved and have that then propel them to want to be involved in future grade levels, and maybe with part-time jobs, jobs during the summer, that they can then afford to do that on their own. So right now, it, we do have those situations, and parents are allowed to pay on a plan basis, and in some cases, the fees are waived. In some cases, we do have some minor funds that somebody may step forward and give for a kid to participate. But we're looking at something that's trying to address more kids.
Then on the opening of school kickoff, personally, I'm very excited to see that it's back in the SPAS Field House that we're being fiscally responsible this year. But I thought that one of the logic, logistics behind moving it to Century was we didn't have room at SPAS. So has something changed? Are we doing it differently, or?
No, this is the second year we will have been at SPAS. It didn't have to do with room, it had to do with availability of the gym. So we couldn't host it on Wednesday and Thursday of that week because of volleyball tournaments and other practices, but working with Stephanie, we were able to secure Tuesday. Had Century World been completed by this time in August, we would have held it at Century, but it wouldn't have been at cost. So.
Well, again, I'm.
It didn't have anything to do with room.
Okay.
It had to do with space availability.
Well, fiscally, I'm very happy to see that we're back into our own facilities. And the last comment about recognizing board members, this is an opening of school employee kickoff, so I really would like to see that that's what we focus on. The board had, or the board president had directed you to follow up on TJ Farakow, or I don't know how to pronounce her last name, concerns on May 12, and I don't see it anywhere in the packet. Is that going to be coming to the board at some point in time?
What concerns, Lisa?
TJ had come and spoke at the podium, and at that time, I had asked Angel if she would direct you to, you said you needed direction to address those concerns, and Angel directed you to do it.
What were the concerns? I don't remember.
I don't, I mean, there were issues with the whole transfer and her applying for a new job and the way that the employment, the way the.
The posting was?
Posting was, and how the different principals handled things differently. I don't remember all the details, but I do remember that we were supposed to get something back, and I didn't see anything, so.
Well, I don't, I don't recall having to come back to the board with that. What I can tell you is, is that after that meeting, I had a hallway conversation with TJ, and I said, "Tell me very clearly what your concerns are." And she said that the postings aren't school-specific. I said, "It'll be fixed." Two days later, it was fixed.
Okay, so things are handled?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments? All right, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve everything except B. Yep, including the recommendation of principals, which is letter E. Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Do we?
Sorry, Kim.
I apologize. Can you repeat? What are we voting on again? All of it?
Consent agenda minus B, but it does include E, which is the recommendation, including the two elementary principals.
The two new ones, okay. I just have a question or a comment on the personnel recommendations, is I would like to see, and I think the board would like to see too, that the exit interviews of when anybody resigns, I mean, we have a lot of people resigning, and so I would love to see their survey or whatever they're talking about, but I would like to see some exit interviews attached, comments, so we know why people are leaving and what's going on. And my other question is, is we got quite a few new hires, which is great, but how many of these are replacing resigning teachers, or are they new positions?
There would not be new positions without board approval, Kim.
So all of these, and there is almost two pages of new employees that are replacing people that have resigned or retired.
That is correct. However, the board has approved new positions over the last two to three months. So it would include new positions, resignations, and retirees.
So we've had a lot of, I don't know if I want to use the word turnover, but that's what I'm going to use.
Well, I think that we have to be careful about that. We provide the board with an annual exit interview summary. I believe it, well, I know that the last one was provided in October, and we are going to, and I can get it for you, it's three or four pages long. We decided not to attach comments at this, at this juncture because we felt, well, first of all, those exit interviews are confidential in nature for those people that choose to do them. If I read through this list here, just want to be sure that there aren't any.
And I guess my question, and thank you for thinking about that, is that I would like for the board to vote on that we get exit interviews when they resign, you know, some kind of summary right off the bat, so we know if there's a problem, we need to address it. That's the only thing I would like the board, maybe we can put that on a future agenda item, so.
Got it down.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for consent agenda minus B. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Then we need to do letter B separately.
Under number seven, before I went into closed session, you had done this on the previous one, and it's not in there, my statement about preferring for it to be an open session, but knowing that it can be enclosed, that needs to be in there. Thank you.
Do you want to approve with changes or bring it back at the next meeting?
Bring it back.
Okay.
Okay, then we're going to go on to information. Business Services. County contract for the elderly, is that Tom?
Is Tom here? Tom?
Good evening. Beautiful day in central Wisconsin. The first item to take a look at is the joint agreement with the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Portage County. This is our ongoing joint agreement to provide meals for the county. The agreement calls for a three-cent increase in the meal cost, to take it from $2.78 to $2.81 for next year, to cover our costs, and also addresses the question that Mr. Presley had last meeting with the fact that this is a self-contained program, we do receive federal aid for it, and the costs, et cetera, have to come out to pay for themselves, and we are not able to increase the costs of this program to subsidize some other program. Federal procedures do not allow that. So I want to get back to him on that question that he had, and would recommend that the board approve the three-cent increase in the program.
Any questions for Tom? Kim?
I just want to make sure I just understood you, that you can only increase the cost of the meal to what we're getting reimbursed?
No, we get reimbursements of, we get commodities and other federal aid to help us support the program, but from our total costs, we subtract the federal aid that we receive and adjust out the commodities that we get so that we arrive at what our costs are, and then that's what we charge.
Okay.
For there, et cetera. And we can't artificially inflate those costs, add pennies to the cost of the meal to subsidize some other unrelated program.
Okay, I understand that. So there is a cost to the district to do this? Yes or no? Small cost, little cost?
Well, not net because we charge for it.
Okay. We don't get reimbursed for that, okay. My question is, I guess, beating around the bush, we increased our student meals by 10 cents. Why are we only increasing this by 3 cents?
Well, the student increase is under the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act, where the federal government is requiring us to increase meal costs to match a certain dollar amount that is tied in with the amount of reimbursement we get for student meals. This is a program separate and apart from that, in which that requirement is not related. And this is an independent program, and this three-cent requirement is all we need to increase to make our costs balance out.
Okay, and I do understand that you have to, your student meals have to get up to a certain point, and you're kind of slowly moving it so it's not a shock. I understand that.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, is why don't we just move this up to 10 cents, since we did the other one also?
Because they're totally different programs, and we don't require 10 cents increase.
Okay, thank you.
In order to make it, sustain the program.
Jeff?
I had a question. I see in the summary of what we take into account, do we take into account as far as our facilities go, I mean, the use and abuse of our facilities to make these extra meals? Is that figured into the cost that we pass along to the county?
The program cost, I don't calculate the program cost specifically, so I don't know the answer to that.
Somebody here that does? Pardon? Is the person who calculated this here?
The food service manager calculates the cost of the programs, et cetera. Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah. Are they here to answer that question, or is Lori here?
They're not here.
We can certainly ask him, Jeff.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tom regarding this? Any other questions for Tom regarding this? Okay, let's do, do we have a motion?
No, but I can move to approve a three cent increase for the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Portage County elderly nutrition program for the 2014-15.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Self-funded dental program?
Mr. President, I need to recuse myself for this.
Yes, the recommendation we're making is, the self-funded dental program is merely a change in the method by which we pay for dental insurance. This recommendation does not alter in any way the policy, the coverage, or anything for employees, it's just a matter of the payment. What we're recommending is that we convert our premium paid type dental insurance to self-funded, which simply means that we actually pay the claims as they're turned in through a third-party administrator, and then we pay the cost to the administrator itself to process the claims. We don't see the claims, we don't handle the claims, and we're not involved in that at all, but instead of paying a flat premium to an insurance company, we would pay those two costs, that would be the claims plus a fee. And based on the information that we received from the, from our consultants at M3, this could save us just under $50,000 a year by just altering the method by which we pay the insurance company. Your decision would not affect next year either way in terms of the rate, because the amount that we charge the employees is the same in this particular year coming up. But if you change to a self-funded dental plan, or methodology, rather, we would be able to save about $50,000, and that methodology would probably be able to help us forestall increases, or the degree of increases, for sometime into the future. I obviously can't tell you how many years or for how long specifically, but hopefully for a few. It'd be our recommendation that we just simply change, change the methodology of payment to self-funded dental insurance, and be a little bit more economical.
Any questions for Tom regarding this? Jeff?
Couple of questions. Number one is, if there is, is there a limit as far as our dental plans, if there's some type of catastrophic injury to an individual?
Yes, there's a stop-loss for each individual.
So do we have stop-loss insurance as part of this?
Yes, it's not like a health insurance where you have to worry about both stop, stop-loss, individual and aggregate. There is no aggregate in this particular case. Each policy only has a specific stop-loss that it pays up to, and these premiums cover that.
Okay, and what is the TPA charge?
I don't have that off the top of my head. We have a rep from M3, but I don't know if that's, if he has that information, because he's here on another matter, dealing with the health insurance, or not health insurance, regular insurance rate, general liability, et cetera.
And the last question, is that TPA, we pay them per claim, or just a flat rate for the year?
We pay them a processing, it would be based on the volume.
Per claim?
Yeah.
We'll get that number for you, Jeff.
All right.
You're welcome.
So, probably should use my microphone. So just, I'm probably asking the same thing Jeff did, but in more layman's terms, the maximum amount that the school district will ever be responsible for is the $681,000, is that, is that right?
Well, it's, it's close to that, but it's, there is a maximum amount that is payable under each plan, so that's a specific amount, and that's why they call it a specific stop-loss, because it stops at that rate, so our loss is capped, and we're not on the hook for more and more and more and more. So, these, it would be an amount less than that, yeah.
Okay, and if everybody, if no one asks for dental care, then we actually could save money?
Well, yes, that's, that's the theory behind this. The fewer people that access the dental plan, the more we save, whereas in a regular plan of payment where you pay a premium, which we're now under, we pay it whether it's used or not, and the additional funds go to the insurance company. In this case, if the people don't access, the degree to which the people don't access the dental coverage, then we are not paying that money out, so it stays in the district.
And, last question, the $681, we've got that in our operating budget, that's not going to be a problem?
Correct.
Okay, that's my question. It's in there, that there's that much liquidity that could be paid out at any time?
Yes, we're paying out these premiums, whether, whether they're a premium now, or it's a self-funded basis, we still budget that. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Kim?
One of the other board members, he's no longer with us, but he talked about self-funding for a while, and I may not be quoting you, but this is what I got, the gist of it, you always said it was a slippery slope. You always had to watch out for it, and he always talked about health insurance, self-funding health insurance.
Right.
Since there is no savings, there's no difference right now, at least for this year, do you think we should have a little bit more research on this, since there's not a change, here it says unchanged whether or not self-funded, it'll stay the same?
No, because we're talking about two different things. Your reference is to health insurance, and I'll clarify that in a minute, this is dental insurance, and there will be a savings of about $50,000 if we do this. So number one, there is a savings, it's about $50,000 if we do this, okay?
But not this year?
This year, yes, so it says-
I mean, 1415 or 1314?
1415, we're talking about 1415 school year. We're talking about upcoming school year, these are for the 1415 school year. We would save $50,000, and this is dental insurance. Dental is very different in terms of self-funding, because you have only the specific stop-loss, which is, I'll just make up a number, let's say you only pay up to $1,000 per person, so it cuts off, you know exactly what your liability is-
Okay.
-in the worst case. Now, when you get to health insurance, that's very different. You have to buy what's called a specific stop-loss, which means that's the amount at which you would self-insure. In other words, if you said you had a $25,000 specific stop-loss, that means the district pays the first $25,000 out of all claims, then the insurance company picks up the rest. But there's also an aggregate stop-loss, which is that of the whole group, and you could theoretically have everyone hitting that $25,000, or beyond that, beyond, they could have hundreds of thousands of dollars of claims per person, and if that got to be whatever your aggregate was, say 125% of claims, if it went beyond, beyond that, then the, then the aggregate picks up, but you've got, you've got some problems in between where you fund and that amount. Let me say it another way, if you funded your health insurance at the aggregate stop-loss level, let's say it was 125% of claims, and that, that amount, let's, let's just say that happened to be $50 million, if you funded the premium such that you brought in $50 million, and you were always on the ball with having the right amount of premium charged your employees, then self-funded health insurance is not a problem. The slippery slope comes in the problem, is that because the district sets its own rates in a self-funded situation, and health insurance tends to have a lot of pressures, especially in the old days with the regular negotiation systems, some districts didn't charge the full amount of premium increase, because maybe it was 20% one year, so they set it at 18, and now they had a vulnerability of a small amount that had to come out of the districts in the worst-case scenario. And if you did that year after year after year, pretty soon you're falling behind, and you no longer have enough money in your reserve to fund a large claim, large claims if they all came in in one year. That's the slippery slope. So if you're going to get into self-funded health, you have to fund at least at the maximum exposure level, and you really have to, when you're starting out, fund a little bit ahead of that, so that you can build up a reserve. And then you have the opportunity to maybe vary a little bit around that exposure level, so you can adjust the reserve up or down if you start to build too much up. So, they're very different funding concerns.
I just got two more. The initial savings, you said close to $50,000, do you believe that's going to be annually, then?
Yes.
Or is it just, as long as there's no-
Well, that's annually, that's a savings over a straight premium, where if we had claims consistent with what we have now, based on the premiums we're paying now, and going into self-funded, we pay ourselves, or we keep the money, we would save $50,000 right off the shoot. But you could potentially save more, depending on the access to the system by the people, and we, we won't pay, you know, we won't pay more than what our liability is, so.
Do you know, do we know any other school district that is self-funding, or?
Oh, sure, there are many of them throughout the state, and I know Everest self-funds dental, have for many, many years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other-
Yep.
That $50,000 amount, was that just off of last year, or was that like three-year average?
That was an amount calculated through, through the insurance company and provided to me by them.
So was it just off of last year's experience, or three years of experience, five years?
It, the amount that they provided, they said if, based on the claims that we have, and the change going to self-funded dental, you would save $49,579.
Specifically by making the change just to dental.
Exactly what years went into that, I don't know.
I guess my concern is, if we had a good year last year, and the year before that, we had a bad year, and the year before that, we had a bad year, but they didn't take those into account, that savings may be less, because on a three-year run, two out of the three years were bad. That's what I'm, that's why I'm asking.
My understanding was, this is out of the, the difference between the, the reserve factor that they have built in, the fact that when you pay a premium, you're paying anticipated claims, as well as their administrative costs, which covers also an additional for reserves, so this eliminates that, and we're strictly paying-
Right, I understand, I understand that concept, I'm just, I want to know the method behind the calculation of how did you come up with the $50,000? Can we get that?
We certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I need, yep?
Yeah, I was going to move to approve the self-funding for the method of funding district dental insurance and next year's dental rates, as shown above.
I'll second that.
Thanks, and thanks for looking into that and finding ways to save us money. Appreciate it. Roll call vote, please.
Just wait, Angel, and you did make sure that you announced, Tom, that it's identical plan and coverage?
Yes, I did, when I started out.
Okay, just want to make sure that everybody heard that.
It's identical, we're not changing the plan at all, it's only how we pay for it.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
She's recused.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero, with no recuse.
Okay, and Lisa's returned to the table. HRA, irrevocable trust.
Okay, probably the very simplest way, I've been figuring out, trying to figure out the best way to make this simple in its explanation, and that is this. The purpose of this trust is to segregate the funds of what we're doing in the HRA activity from district funds. That's really it in a nutshell. We have a high deductible health plan, has an HRA component to it. The district pays the first portion of that high deductible, and then the employees pay the rest. The amount that we pay, we deposit into a bank account at Community First Bank. DPI has seen that when that was set up, we really should have created that as an irrevocable trust, so that the funds paid into that account for this purpose, on which aid is paid at the time we put it in there, is segregated from the regular district funds, because it has a specific purpose. It goes in there for the HRA, and we're not to use it for other purposes. So, this is our, our attempt, or this is the way to correct that. And all it does is it, it creates a trust that our attorneys have drawn up, that establishes a trustee, which would be the Director of Human Resources, a custodian, which would be the Community First Bank, as it has been all along, and investment advisor, it's a finance manager position. This is cash activities, we can't really invest the money for links of terms and things like that anyway. It has to be highly liquid, because as the claims come in and the demands come in, we have to pay that out, so the money comes in and goes out every month. In the past, recent past, it's reached as much as $900,000 in a given month. In future months, we found we don't need that much, it will probably max around $500,000 a month. But it has to be in a, in a cash account, interest-bearing cash account, so it's pretty straightforward. But again, I repeat, the whole purpose of this, oh, and by the way, this trust agreement, you can change trustee, custodian, investment advisors in the future if you want, but it's, it's very different than the other trusts that we have. We're not using the same block of money and investing for long periods, it's rolling over every month, and, and we don't really have it for long periods. So you do have flexibility to change this in the future, and its purpose is to segregate the activity of this HRA for employees, those monies, from our regular district monies, and it requires an instrument like this, a trust, so that the funds that are in Community First for that HRA belong to that trust, and are therefore segregated from our regular daily activity, irregular daily funds.
Somebody have any questions for Tom?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's present.
It's fine.
Is there a reason we're doing an irrevocable instead of just an HRA trust agreement?
According to the attorney and DPI, it must be irrevocable.
It must be?
Yes.
Okay.
In order to provide that break and that separation. Now, that doesn't mean it's forever, because it will be, as long as we have the HR arrangement, this trust is there. But if we ever dissolve the HRA arrangement, then we can dissolve the trust at that point. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tom regarding this? Kim?
Basically, I was going to ask the same question, and I seen on page five, number C basically gives us the definition of that, is that if there is a pool of money in there that's left over, I'm going to say, or not used, we can't use that for any other district cost other than for the benefits? If I'm reading that correctly?
Right.
On C up there, your top, the top one, so, but, and then it did say upon termination of the trust agreement, so you can terminate it if there's changes that have happened.
Yes.
Because that word kind of threw me off too, for a while, okay.
Yeah.
Fish, does community, it's community first, right? Does community first, do they actively manage that money? I mean, like, are they investing it, or is it sitting?
They're repository only.
Okay, and then do they charge anything for that?
Bill?
They said no.
No.
Okay.
Bill works with them on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no.
Thanks.
They've been very good from the reports that Bill's had over the years, and, so, we're not really changing the process at all, we're just creating a legal instrument that segregates it and then creates a separation. The big issue is the fact that state aid is paid when that money is actually deposited into Community First Bank, so it needs to be segregated from our rest of our funding, because if, if there's money left at the end of the year, and it's carried over and hasn't been spent, then the question is, well, what fiscal year is it really in? And we need that clarity, so it's pretty important that we do this, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, then I need a motion, please.
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the resolution to establish the Stevens Point Area Public School District Health Reimbursement Arrangement, the HRA irrevocable trust agreement, and to approve the Stevens Point Area Public School District Health Reimbursement Arrangement, the HRA irrevocable trust agreement itself. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, funding of school-based school improvement plans.
Yeah, school-based improvement plan, and Mr. Carlson- Yeah, school-based improvement plan and Mr. Carlson and Harnson are here to answer questions specifically on that plan if need be. Had been funded for some years from its inception under grants. And last year, this year, we funded it out of a fund balance thing. But now to move forward really for sustainment purposes, if you want to continue this practice, we really should incorporate it as part of the budget. So I'm coming to you to explain that and to secure a motion to include the $95,000 for the school improvement plan to be incorporated as a part of the budget so that we have authority to add that to the budget and et cetera. And then we've got documentation to support why it's there. And if you have specific questions about what they do with the school improvement plan and that type of thing, those gentlemen are here to answer your questions in that regard. So.
I'm gonna have questions for either Tom, Bill, or Keel regarding this.
Well, go ahead. I do. But it's like, it's, explain for me if you would, Title II funds?
Title II funds?
Yes.
You want to take a run at that? Federal funds for reading?
Title I is reading.
Title I reading, Title II?
Staff development funds.
Come on. Staff development?
Okay, so if we do this, the line here, it says Title II funds would be expanded to broader coverage. Can you just elaborate that on?
Right. We use Title II funds for two things. We use it for professional development and we also use it for class size reduction. So when we hire staff to reduce class sizes, we can fund that out of Title II. So we, this past year, we funded two and a half positions, teaching positions, to lower class sizes with that. And we plan on continuing with that next year. And that leaves roughly around 40, we were just working on the budget for next year, around 48,000 that we can use for professional development. So when we bring in speakers, when we release teachers to work collaboratively, when we send people to conferences for travel and those kinds of things, we can pay for that out of Title II. It's very specific of what you could spend the money for and you have to submit a plan that's very detailed. And anytime you change that plan, you have to resubmit the plan to DPI and get it approved. And it's a, it's a difficult process to do that. So this gives us a lot more flexibility in our school improvement plans. We don't have to go through that process of re, of sending the plan in again if something changes mid-year.
So another really dumb question. What did you do last year? I mean, if it wasn't, if it wasn't in this SIP, if it wasn't that way last year, how did you pay for those things?
It was last year, but prior to that, then we would, we would take the money out of school improvement and we'd have to write it. The problem with that is you have to submit the plan now. Before June, principals will be submitting their plans. And then if something comes over the summer, they identify a different need, then it's very difficult to change that. We would fund those kinds of things with school improvement dollars. It was just much, it's very inflexible and harder, harder to use and harder to change how you're gonna use it once you've written the plan.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Sort of?
You know. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I'd like you to make the motion.
Please do.
Again.
You're on a roll.
To allocate up to $95,000 of district funds to support school-based school improvement plans for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay. 2014 general liability, property casualty, and workers' compensation insurance rates.
Okay. Annually, we bring this to you to secure your approval and to make you aware of the insurance coverages and to have an opportunity to discuss on occasion some issues that may arise. We recently secured bids in the prior year and we're in the middle of a period of which we have carrier coverage. With respect to one of the issues, workers' comp, our, one of our bad years, really bad years fell out. So the rates calculation worked to our advantage and we're gonna see about $158,000 drop in premiums for work comp, which is good. Overall, as the current table shows you, we'd be just under 135,000 in cost reductions over the current year for next year versus this year. In our review of this, Mark Meeks with our consultant, who is here today, M3, Mark is seated right here. He willingly volunteered to come and meet here tonight in case you had any questions. He sent me a letter in follow-up, a memo if you will, and follow-up to the conversation we had, which is the page just behind this memo of mine. And he's talking about our crime coverage. We have a computer crime coverage of 100,000 and a 500,000 overall. But 100,000 is pretty low coverage when it comes to computer fraud. When you consider we have payrolls that run about $2.5 million a crack and we have two to three of those, we have, every two weeks, we have a payroll like that. So if there's a significant problem with one payroll with regard to computer crime, that's a pretty big hit for us. So one of the things that he's suggested is that we consider upping our coverage to $2 million. Our premium right now at 100,000 is, of coverage is $3,200, $3,220. To move it to 500,000 would be $3,300. To move it to a million would be 46. And to move it to 2 million with a $20,000 deductible is $5,800. And I guess the question I would pose to you is, is what would be your pleasure? I do suggest we increase it. And I think his logic is well-founded and I would concur that our recommendation, my recommendation would concur with his that you consider the $5,800 annual premium and increase that to 2 million. But that is your decision and we did provide you with three, three total options. And I'd like to discuss with you what your pleasure is.
Can you repeat? What's the payroll amount?
About $2.5 million of payroll.
Okay. Any other questions?
So with the payroll being $2.5 million?
You want to come up, Mark?
And that being a risk of losing the 2.5, why are we not looking at a 2.5 million coverage instead of a two?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. There have been a couple of claims that have involved Wisconsin schools over the last 12 to 18 months involving this very coverage. One is very public, the school district northwest of here. One is on the southeastern side of the state. I can't speak to the school district northwest of here, but it's rare where there's not some type of recovery when something like this happens. So in the case involving the southeastern school district, it was 450,000 in payroll. There was a $300,000 recovery. The policy ended up paying 150,000 on the, on the coverage. So.
So how much more in premiums, annual premiums would there be if we chose to go with the full 2.5?
The full 2.5? You have, it's not just an issue of cost. It's also what is the carrier able to do as well?
Okay.
It's only been recent where they've been willing to increase their limits from 1 to 2 million. I'm not 100% sure that they'd even offer to go to anything higher than 2 million. But if they did, my estimate would be somewhere in the 500 to $1,000 in additional premium for that.
Not 500,000 for 500,000 additional premium.
To go up to?
Another $3,200.
No.
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 No, I think if we just go up to that half.
To go up from the two to 2.5?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be fractional cost.
Yeah.
500 to $1,000.
Right.
Would the deductible go up too?
Yeah. It's always gonna be 1% of your, your limit.
It's be 2,500.
Correct.
25,000.
Jeff?
I noticed on our property, we had a large percentage increase. GL, we had a large percentage increase. Automobile, we had a large percentage increase. Why?
Well, primarily on the auto, primarily due to losses. Loss ratio's been over 100% for the last couple of years. Property value, property is driven primarily because of your values. And again, the premium's determined upon replacement cost. You know, if we, when I looked at the cost per square foot to replace, it's right in the range. It's under $180 per square foot, which is what our construction unit in Madison says is adequate.
And who are the carriers that we have for those?
Employers mutual, EMC out of Des Moines.
Did you go out to the market and potentially see if we could get a better deal on those?
We did. And Dr. One's referred to it initially. We did that process last year. We did not do it this year. It's, it's not something that we recommend doing as your consultant, that you go to the market every year. But at the same time, I think it's, it's important to note that EMC is currently working with over 280 school districts in Wisconsin, over 1,500 in the Midwest.
The board policy recommends three to five years to re-bid or re-RFP. And this is a three-year contract and we just did it last year.
Just a comment on that. These are 10% increases. This isn't like 1 or 2%. We're talking 10% or more increases in our premium, which is pretty significant. I could see 2 or 3%, but 10%? I mean, I question why we would want to stay with a company that hits us with 10% increases in three categories.
Well, again, the, a lot of it sometimes is driven by losses. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to say it's 10% fair or not without knowing what the loss ratio is. I can say that over the last year, there has been over 100% loss ratio when you're looking at the entire premium. Is that typical? No. But market conditions drive the rate, exposures drive the rate, you know? But I also know that, you know, out of the 50 school districts I work with, where they have looked at options, EMC has not lost one account this year. So while it may seem extreme and arguably maybe, maybe it is at first glance, it's still the most competitive rate in the marketplace today.
Chris?
Our workman's comp is also run through EMC, is that right?
Correct.
And because we've lost a bad year, we're going, we're saving 158 grand, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so that's all part of the package?
Right.
All right.
But those rates are set by the state.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp.
Oh, okay.
That's not set by the insurance company.
Okay.
That's state.
But the rates are also a function of our claims over a three-year period. And we've worked very hard with EMC to, number one, make our employees much more aware of what drives worker comp claims, to settle claims, number two, which we can do, rather than have them just fester over a period of years and continue to rack up bills and then just look for those good years that, and drop off the bad ones. So it's not just a function of what the state sets, but our own experiences.
Yes.
I'm not sure if anybody else feels this way, but I would like to know if the insurance company would cover that other half a million dollars for $500 a year, a minimal amount. I mean, I feel personally more secure in the taxpayers' funds because, you know, the, you just, you know, you know, don't want to gamble, that kind of.
Sure.
But if no one else feels that, that's a legitimate concern.
I guess I would just ask the question, does anybody go the whole amount?
I would say if you, if you increased your, your limits to 2 million, you would, you would be the only district in the state that has those types of limits.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern. I don't think mostly, from what I've heard of, that districts do that.
No.
I asked a couple of people from different districts what their, so. I'm in support of the 2 million. I would, I don't think I'd go more than that. And I think you would get money back if, you know, eventually if you went through that. So I think that's plenty.
So Chris, when you talked to these other school districts, did you ask them what their payroll was?
I didn't. But they didn't go 100%. Neither one went 100% because I didn't know a lot about this, but a couple of friends that work in different districts who are in the business office, I said.
Chris?
Good. One more. Is, so now you've heard our conversation. Is, is the, is the recommendation that you're making for 2 million, I mean, is that your recommendation or is that the maximum that EMC will provide?
No, it would be my recommendation regardless if they were able to offer more.
Okay.
The reason I supported that is because in the cases that we've seen in the state, they have received recovery.
Yeah, I saw that in here.
Probability, although, you know, it's no guarantee. But the probability of having the entire amount lost and not recovering some is pretty remote. So that's why we went to the two as opposed to beyond or whatever.
Okay.
Kim?
And I guess that was my question. I mean, does most companies do like a percentage of their payroll? Or is it, and you feel that that 2 million is adequate even though our payroll is 2.5?
Yeah, I would say most districts as a whole are probably underinsured in that area. Just because I think in most cases, they don't understand what the exposure is. It's, it's something that's just gotten a lot more attention over the last 12 to 18 months because of the claim, the claim frequency. And everybody hears about the, you know, the identity theft and, you know, it's just, but typically, you know, they're, they're a little slower to react on this type of coverage than maybe what they should be. It's ironic in this particular case study. You know, they had just added the coverage when the claim occurred, you know, three weeks earlier. So at least there was something there for them.
And I guess my question is like Jeff was, I mean, because I'm in the insurance business also, you know, the 10% increase just kind of blows your mind. I mean, granted, we're talking millions and millions of dollars and I can see not looking every year, but I would surely like to, hopefully the board will advise to look something by the end of next year. So we're coming into our third year, you know, to do that. My question, I think the other question is for Tom, is our automobile, is that for our delivery fleet? Basically, that's?
That's for all our vehicles, including buses.
All vehicles, including buses.
But, okay, what, what do we have for automobiles? Delivery fleet?
Well, we have.
We don't buses, right?
Buses, includes all the buses too.
All, includes all the buses. And that's increased because of our losses, our loss ratio.
Yeah, a big part of it. There's, there's over 100 vehicles that are included on the schedule.
We have a lot of vehicles covered. Remember, we lost a bus into a fire last year where it just caught fire from a short.
Well, I think we should have looked into that automobile motor. Anyways. Anyways, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you asked about automobile and you talk about it's, it's a $7,000 increase over a 45,000, but there was significant losses in the last year.
So, Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the insurance premium renewal rates for the 2014-15 excluding crime as presented. Motion to approve the crime insurance renewal premium rate at $5,857 to provide $2 million in coverage.
That's two separate motions.
It is two separate motions.
We'll start with the first one.
Okay, well, I'll make just the first one then, too.
I'll just second it. You already said it.
Okay.
Yep. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Is there another motion?
There is another motion to approve the crime insurance renewal premium rate at $5,857 to provide 2 million in coverage.
I'll second it again.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Educational Services, ELL Instructional Leader Position Recommendation. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you. Here tonight to talk a little bit about the English Language Learner Program and their need for an instructional leader position. Several months ago, I met with the English Language Learner teachers. We have 11. We have 11 teachers, which equates to 10.4 positions, with a couple of those being part-time positions, who work in our buildings, working with our English Language learners, children whose English is not their first language. And they approached Q and I with the idea that they felt a little disjointed. They're spread across multiple buildings, providing services to our students, and they try to get together, and they try to meet and share, collaborate and share ideas. It's a little hard for them to do without someone kind of providing some structure to that. So they approached us with the idea of having an instructional leader, one of them would become the instructional leader who would coordinate their efforts. So we gave them a little homework. We said, okay, we're willing to think about this idea or entertain this idea, but we'd like to know a couple of things. We'd like to know what is it that you think this person would do, what would be their specific responsibilities, and then how much time do you think they would spend doing that outside of their normal teaching responsibilities? So they did come back. After about a month, they met and talked and came back with some ideas for what the job would entail. So from that, we put together the attached job description, which talks about what their performance responsibilities would be, what their qualifications would be, and what we'd be looking for as far as skills, knowledge, and abilities. So we put together that job description based upon their input. And then in order to get an idea of what we thought this might be fair to compensate someone for the extra hours they'd be putting in, we asked them to do similar to what we did with the classroom, with the regular ed classroom teachers, how much time, how much extra time beyond your teaching duties is this going to take you? So they put together a time commitment table, which is the second attachment, and it came out to about 100 hours in the school year, across the period of the school year, that they'd be putting in coordinating the English Language Learner Program. And they did a pretty nice job of, I think, describing, detailing what those extra hours would entail. It's not a comparable position to a classroom instructional leader because it doesn't have the day-to-day contact, because they're spread out amongst multiple buildings, so they won't have the daily contact that they would have, that a classroom teacher would have. And that's why the hours would be about a third of the hours. When we calculated how much extra time a classroom instructional leader would be putting in, it was in excess of 300 hours during the school year. This would be about an additional 100 hours, which is how we arrived at what we think would be a fair rate of compensation of $2,000 for the person who'd be selected for this position. The nice thing is, looking at Title Funds, we also have Title III Funds. And Title III is Language Instruction for Limited English Professioned and Immigrant Students. So those are federal dollars that the district receives to help educate those students. And we checked with the DPI to make sure that it'd be okay to use those funds to fund a position like this, and we did get their approval from their person in charge of English Language Program, saying that would be appropriate use of those funds. So while there is an additional cost to it, it wouldn't necessarily have to come out of the district budget. We could take that $2,000 out of our Title III, excuse me, yeah, Title III Funds would allow us to compensate that person without dipping into district funds. So our recommendation would be to approve the position with a stipend of $2,000 for the 14-15 school year. If it's approved, we'll get it posted and get the person identified, and hopefully get them to work even this summer, kind of getting coordinated and organized for the 14-15 school year.
Any questions for Bill? Kim?
First, I want to say thank you for getting the ELL teachers involved. It's nice to have, you know, to get their feedback, as it's so much easier in my book. So my other question is, is how does this compare to the RTI leaders and what we're paying them per hour? I know that the amount's not the same.
Right. We figured out to pay based on the $20 an hour, the same amount, but roughly using that timetable, they're figuring they're going to put in about 100 extra hours of time, where the RTI or the classroom instructional leader's going to put in well over 300 hours of extra time during the school year. So about a third of the time.
So we kind of stuck to the $20 an hour?
That's typically what we pay for curriculum work during the summer or during the school year when people are working that extra time. That's been the rate.
Yeah, and I apologize for not being able to have any time to look up what we paid them per hour. So, okay. And again, thank you for asking their input.
Any other questions for Bill?
Mine already got answered.
Awesome.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the creation of the ELL Instructional Leader Position with a stipends of 2,000. I almost said 200,000. 2,000! Boy, I want that job then, for the 2014-15 school year, per the rationale provided in the memo and attached documents.
I'll second that motion.
It's your turn, you guys over there.
Go ahead.
You guys are doing too well over there.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. RTI assessments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I know that you have a packet of graphs, but before I even jump into that, I kind of want to talk about how we arrived at those graphs. So as we've been working on RTI over, I mean, we started our implementation six, seven years ago. As we've built our system, there's been a lot of revision along the way. And so we've arrived at a system that is solid. It meets the legal requirements connected to RTI within the state and federal regulations, and also is instructionally informative for our teachers. As we revise the assessments that we were using over time, one of the things we heard from teachers is, we use this assessment for screening purposes, but then I do different assessments to get instructional information for my kids. Can we merge the two? So that's the route we took in revising our assessments, because it was silly to have teachers doing two assessments, one to fulfill RTI and one for instructional purposes, when we could really use the instructionally purposeful ones for both. So we made that move, but along with that came the sacrifice of time, because instructionally purposeful assessments generally involve side-by-side assessment with a student, which is one-on-one, which takes time away from instruction. So while we made an instructionally sound decision to have those assessments, we also lost instructional time in order to complete those assessments. So with feedback that we worked through our instructional leader group, who brought the teacher voice back from their unit meetings, one of the biggest frustrations of teachers is always the lack of time to complete assessments and do purposeful instruction. So that's where the elementary assessment, RTI assessment pilot came from for the second semester of this year. So we looked at two of our elementary schools, Jefferson and Madison Elementary, and all regular education teachers for the second semester of the school year got one release time for the winter, one release day for the winter screening period, and one release day for the spring screening period. They used that release time to assess students, while a substitute was then able to continue the instruction within the classroom. So with that background information, I do have the graphs on a PowerPoint. If it would be beneficial to pull them up and we can talk through them, or if you feel comfortable having looked at them, we don't need to do that. So I'll leave that up to you.
What is the wish of the board?
I...
I.
I don't either.
I don't need them.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. I'll take it.
Yeah.
So with that, I think you can see through the graphs that we were able to gain back. And different grade levels have different assessment needs, depending on where required with PALS from the state. Teachers have requested in first grade to continue using the DRA II assessment because it gives them more instructionally sound information, so we can't get rid of PALS because that's state required. But teachers requested to keep the DRA II. So there's different assessments in there. So some grades showed more time recouped through the pilot than others did. But you can see in the graphs that at all grades, we recouped some instructional time through the pilot. So our recommendation is that we provide three release days per general education teacher per building for the purpose of assessment, so that they can knock out a whole bunch of assessments in one day and gain back that instructional time with their students.
Any questions for Kelly?
Sorry, I always have questions.
That's a good thing.
So when you tested this, and first of all, can I say, I love this teacher feedback. That was really helpful for me to read, you know, comments that they made. But in your test or your pilot, you did two release days?
We did.
But you're asking for three?
Right, because we didn't start the pilot until second semester. So there's a fall screening period, a winter screening period, and a spring screening period. So they had released them second semester for the winter and spring period.
Okay. And then my other question is, I have, how many teachers did you talk to? But you've already said that you talked to, you did this for every teacher at Madison and every teacher at Jefferson?
Correct. So I collected pilot data for every teacher at Madison and Jefferson, and then a comparable amount of teachers in non-pilot schools for the quantitative data. The feedback, the anecdotal feedback was, I asked all teachers at Jefferson and Madison, and that's what I got back.
So can I just make one little comment? When I was out campaigning and going, I went to seven of the elementary schools. At every single one, somebody brought up the lack of time to do RTI. I mean, it just came up again and again and again, so I'm really happy to see this. It was a good proposal.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yep, Kim?
I was happy to go to the track meet, the fifth and sixth track meet this year, and just kind of walking around, and I don't know how many of you guys all made it, but the teachers, their biggest complaint is they don't teach anymore. They test, and they test. So besides that, I am glad that you got the teachers involved, and I think we need to get them more involved. I really think, since we're starting these committees, we need to bring this issue to the Student Achievement Committee and look into it further. Because I would really like, going back to what I said when we gave them their stipends, is I really think we should get a position hired for this, so these teachers aren't out of their classroom, even though we're limiting it. They want to teach. They don't want to test. And to test that, you know, you're teaching at optional, different ends of the spectrum. And again, what the teachers are telling me is that they're missing out time with the middle children. And so I would like to see them teachers teach and get somebody to do this. That's their job. There's pros and cons to it, I know. So I would like to see it to come to the committee, you know, down the road when we get those formed and look into it more, so.
Anyone else? Yep, Jeff?
When you implement this, I'm assuming you stagger the days. It's not like you pick one day on the calendar and say...
Correct. The teachers have a window, and depending on which assessment it is, like PALS is a two-week window, that's state required. DRA is a six-week window. So teachers are able to take the days when it fits into theirs. And they're also allowed to break it into half-days, because you may have your specials in the afternoon or morning, so then you miss that much assessment time. So a lot of our teachers broke it into two half-days so that they could maximize the amount of time.
So you allow them the flexibility?
Yep, absolutely. And there were also some, in the winter screening, third through sixth grade is only test students who are struggling. So some teachers only had one or two, so they chose not to take the release time because they only had to test one or two students, so they didn't need a whole afternoon. So we'd allow that flexibility to use it for what makes sense for their classrooms.
Chris?
Thank you very much. Reading through that was really obvious, how coordinated you are, and getting all the information, pulling it all together to come up with it. So I think it's a great plan, and because I think it's a great plan, I'm going to make a motion. And you're on the roll. To approve a total of three release days per general education teacher per year in each elementary school for the purpose of administering universal screening assessments.
Second.
I'm supposed to do that? Roll bubble, please.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nothing for Student Services, and for Technology, Reed Rashalo has asked to speak before we get there.
You know, I've often questioned how well the board members read their packets. Another example is this Technology Report. Tonight, earlier, Lisa Totten commented about the Steering Committee, and she questioned why does Jackson School keeps coming up? And then Angel Faxon, you stated that there's no plan for, you know, stated a plan for Jackson. And then Christine Scott followed up with that, questioning Lisa Totten, where would you get that from? Okay, then tried to explain. I can't point you to the page in this long report, because it doesn't have a number on, okay? But I've got it right here. And it's got misconceptions about Technology Professional Development Center. This report is about, from the Technology Steering Committee, if you've read it, telling you what their plan is, okay? And then misconceptions, okay? Well, you know, all training will occur, you know, technology will... Jackson School is permanent, limits its future use. Huh? Jackson School pops up here, okay? So we move on here, why a Technology Center? And keep in mind, for some of you board members, that this board has also gone down on record that you weren't convinced you needed a center, okay? Now, I believe the administration wants to pay back Centry for a promise that they made that they're going to have one, and they're going to do everything possible to create one at Jackson School. Have you seen the pictures, you know? Okay? But now, they say, but now, at this supercommittee, you know, we were told, Lisa Totten, you and I, a couple, that, one of the members told, when they didn't know even who we were, what they were told about Jackson School. Now all of a sudden, where did we come up with that? Okay, then you go on, read again here, and then temporary PD location. Utilize Jackson School as-is, minor costs, electrical heat, snowplow. Then all of a sudden, this report kind of ends. So at the back of this report, they got a use, this is where you, this is where people come up with this idea that Jackson School is going to be used for something, that their minds have been made up in this district, okay? That's where it's coming up. It's here. And as soon as I saw this technology, you know, it goes off. I'm looking through this thing. I'm figuring, where is it hidden? It wasn't even hidden. It was right there. Jackson School. That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about here. And that's where, you know, so this, people are being disingenuous or not getting the point. Some people are being, I think, flat-out lying to people here about what's going on here. And then other people are being disingenuous on how they're advancing this Jackson School issue. And then, what's going to happen tonight? Somebody's going to, I hope they don't do this, I hope you clean this up. Somebody's going to say, oh, we'll accept this report and put it on record, because it says for information only. And that's how they get you. Then they'll come back, two months from now, and say, well, you accepted the report, and then the report talked about Jackson School. So I hope someone here addresses this issue and takes this Jackson School out of this mix, and tells somebody who made this long report, spent a lot of time doing it, we have no plan for Jackson School, so why are you bringing up Jackson School? How about Century Insurance, if you want a center? If you want one, but you have gone on record claiming you don't really need one, or you question the need for it, okay? You have, I mean, okay. But if you are going to have one, how about having one at Century Insurance? Why does it have to be the school, if you did one? But address both of these issues, about how Jackson School is being slid right in there all the time. That's what this is all about. And then you wonder why people don't trust this administration. I blame it on the administration and the board. You got to keep watching this stuff. You got to keep on these guys. Because I could almost be certain, I would bet money, that is why this is, that they've promised Century Insurance. And Century isn't doing this because they're altruistic. If you had read the report, when, if they get this center, what's going to be called, it's going to be the Centry place, they're going to have their name on it, and they're going to have a board, and they're going to control it. That's what they're doing, I believe they're doing it for.
All right, have a seat. Thanks. District Technology Plan.
Ready? Almost. Okay, there are people sitting around here. Okay, well, we're really excited to be able to talk to you tonight about our plan for professional development for technology. Earlier this year, we talked about the Centry Grant and all the things that go with that, including the thousands of devices that we're now going to have in the hands of students and teachers. What goes along with that is how do you help those teachers to use those devices in a meaningful way? We spent the last year on the Technology Steering Committee working on coming up with this plan. We looked at different models for professional development, the other districts were doing, that SEASs were doing, that were being done nationally. And we took the best parts of what we thought would work, that were a good fit for our district, and we came up with this plan. So one of the things to start off with is the importance of professional development. And the U.S. Department of Education did a very long study about what actual high-quality professional development looks like. Number one, it's of sufficient length, frequency, and intensity. You can't just do professional development once a year or on a, you know, one institute day and say you're done. So for this plan, we really wanted to come up with a way that we could get in those three things. How do we get in professional development that's long enough, that they have a chance, that teachers have a chance to learn how to use a technology? How do we offer enough training so that it's actually available, so that it's not just a one-time deal? You missed it, you missed out. And how do we get that intensity where we really focus on what we need? The second point is that it revolves around helping teachers move students toward their state's content and performance standards. So high-quality professional development isn't just about learning a technology tool or, you know, learning something new. It relates to student achievement. We're trying to do something that allows teachers to have an impact on what they're doing with students. The third point is that teachers should have a central role in planning the professional development, and this plan takes that into account. We're giving teachers a way to personalize and individualize professional development more than ever before. And finally, we want to give teachers the chance to have ample opportunity to practice the skills and activities that we're presenting in this plan. This slide we got from the train that we went through with our tech integration specialists, all of whom are here tonight to help present this plan, except for Liz Steele, who's on a plane, I believe, or an airport going to Indonesia somewhere. So maybe she's watching this on a live stream. If you are Liz, bon voyage. But I love this slide when we had our training for our tech integration specialists, because what it talked about is, when you do professional development, you're really looking at trying to do something different and something new. And that's what we're trying to do with our technology professional development. If you just give a workshop on a skill, people show up, they have two hours, the chances of that change taking hold are about 10%. If you do a workshop and you have some modeling where they get to see how it works, it goes up a little bit, 2% or 3%. If you have a workshop, modeling, and you give time for practice, it increases a little bit. If you add workshop, modeling, practice, and you give feedback to the people who are trying to do that change, it increases a little bit. But where you get the huge jump is where you have workshop, modeling, practice, feedback, and you add coaching. And that's one of the things we really are trying to expand with our professional development plan, and we have the people to do it. We have an excellent team of tech integration specialists that are going to add all of those elements into this plan to give us that high-quality professional development that we want for So we had this survey early in the year to find out what teachers wanted, and this is just a real brief summary of the main points of that. Number one, teachers want devices. What's the point of having professional development if you don't have the devices to use? Why should I learn how to use a Chromebook if I don't get them? They are going to get them. We're bringing in thousands of devices through the Centry Grant. They wanted time to learn how to use the technology, so we're trying to give them that time by offering multiple opportunities for professional development during the school day, after school, summer, and also on their own, online, and any other way we can think of. Flexibility. They wanted the flexibility to choose which method works best for them. They also wanted differentiated training for tablets, Chromebooks, Google Docs, Moodle, and Smartboards. Those are the top items that they requested for technology professional development. We asked them, what would you like training on? The devices, Google, Moodle, and Smartboards were the, you know, the top five or six. So what are the goals of our professional development plan? Number one, we want to provide all students with the skills to succeed. That's what this is about. High-quality professional development is about having an impact on students. The second point is, it's a focus on teaching and learning, not just devices. We're not just saying, the Chromebooks are here, and now everything's changed. It's what the teachers do with those devices that really matter, and that's why we're putting such an emphasis on professional development. The third point is, we want to create a sustained system of resources in professional development. We want to keep it going. This isn't just a one-year deal or a one-time plan where we say, everyone's got trained on how to use a laptop and you're done. We want to keep this going, and we hope that when we implement this plan, that we're going to reflect on it and we're going to improve on it. So this isn't a static plan. This is dynamic. We're looking at improving the processes that we put in place. And the last point is, we have to stay current with technology changes. We all know what's happened the last several years. What's ahead two or three years from now? We don't know what's coming. But if we have a good system in place, we're going to be able to know what those changes are and get ahead of the game and start teaching our teachers those technology changes before they're already here or two or three years into it. We have some principles behind this plan. We call these the guiding principles. It's sort of our compass point. We're looking at direction about what we want to do. And number one thing is, devices don't guarantee innovation, improvement in teaching and learning. Just because you have technology doesn't mean that there is going to be a change in a teaching practice. It has to go hand-in-hand with what's going on in the classroom. Professional development is as important as access to devices. For every dollar we spend on devices, we better be spending money on how to train the teachers how to use them. Finally, adequate financial resources are crucial, including administrative support, trainers, technicians, and facilities. So we have to be able to give all that support to make things with technology work. It's not just a, you know, a one-time deal. It's not just a single approach. There's all these facets that go into it. Okay, and then the next slide, Lori's going to talk a little bit. We heard a little bit about what's going on with the Professional Development Center. We wanted to talk more about that and explain it, and Lori's going to do that.
So if you've spent any time in the district, whether as a teacher, a parent, a school board member, or just paying attention to what's been going on, there's been a lot of conversation about the Technology Professional Development Center. And one of the things that we really are hoping to address tonight are to lay out the clear professional development plan, and in doing that, we need to also address some of the misconceptions that are out there about the Professional Development Center as it relates to technology. First of all, one of the misconceptions that's out there is that all training will occur at whatever this location is going to be. You're going to see that with the professional development model, there are going to be embedded coaches that are going to be in the buildings. Another misconception that there is, is that the Technology Integration Specialists will be removed from schools. In addition to the fact that coaches, the TIS staff will be embedded into the different buildings and providing professional development and coaching in each of those different areas, there are going to be a variety of different ways in which the TIS are going to be meeting the professional development needs of teachers in places where it will be most convenient for everyone. Another misconception that's out there is that if we have a Professional Development Center, a Technology Professional Development Center, then those resources will be diverted from students. And thanks to the Centry Foundation grant, clearly, students and teachers are going to be having access to the devices. One of the huge misconceptions, and coming from an elementary school perspective, is that schools have ample space for training. They simply do not. At the building where I've taught at Washington School, even to be able to go and pull a small training, you have to jockey for position. There simply is no available space. Another misconception that's out there is that the Technology Professional Development Center will be at Jackson, that it is a permanent, it limits all future use for Jackson School. That's a misconception. As you'll see by going in and listening to this entire presentation, Jackson School is part of the solution, but it is not a permanent solution by any stretch of the imagination at this point. And finally, one of the other misconceptions is that the Technology Professional Development Center concept has not changed. It really has. I was one of those people that when I first saw the Technology Professional Development Center information that was first made public probably, you know, a year and a half ago, I was one of those, one of those people who was skeptical about that. And I think there has been a lot of listening that has happened. There's been a lot of feedback and a lot of response as a result of that. So the big question that we have is, why is a Technology Professional Development Center needed? The first point is that there is a lack of dedicated space for training. We have a Technology Professional Development Center space, if you would, if you would call it, over at the Technology Building, but that actually is an office space for a number of the technology support staff there. I have led trainings in that professional development space, and it is very challenging to try to facilitate a training in there when you also have technicians that are trying to do their jobs and trying to make phone calls and having other people come in while you're trying to facilitate training. One of the other big obstacles that we've run into is the efficiency in scheduling and planning. One of the things that you're going to see as you, as you learn more about the Professional Development Plan is that we're anticipating 120 training sessions next year. To be able to go and facilitate 120 professional development sessions without having any dedicated space is logistically a nightmare. We are fortunate enough to be able to go and use the Bliss Professional Development Center, but the amount of planning and logistics that that takes, the advanced warning that that requires, and the fact that we are only one of many other entities within the district that need to utilize that space, makes that very challenging. Even for Technology Steering Committee meetings this year, where we had something scheduled there, you get bumped from that, from that facility to another facility, and then you're in that second, you know, designated area, and lo and behold, that was also set aside for another meeting. And it's this domino effect of trying to find a place for us to be able to go and have trainings and meetings. Through the Centry Foundation, we'll be getting over 3,000 devices and 80 carts, and we need space to be able to go and deploy those and get those into the hands of students and teachers. And finally, another reason why we need the Technology Professional Development Center is that it's going to be a place where pre- and post-deployment training can happen. One of the great parts about this whole PD model is that it's not, here's your device, here's an hour of training, and now go on your own, but there's going to be systematic and sustained professional development, so that way teachers can be utilizing the devices to the best of their abilities for student achievement.
So we had this slide that talked about funding. Now, this funding that we're talking about would be for remodeling if that were to occur. Part of what we're proposing is to use the facility as is for our training needs and to really see how it would be used, and if that would be the board's decision, we could fund remodeling, the bathrooms, carpeting, things like that. But the concept has really changed. We're not talking about taking over a whole wing of Jackson School. We're asking to use four classrooms. We have four trainers. We'd like to have four classrooms to be able to use dedicated to technology training. Any of the equipment we're talking about putting in there would be portable, which means we can take it out. One of the things that really has changed with the plan is that every teacher is going to have a device, so we don't have to stock carts of devices at any facility. They would come, have a training, they would get their device, and if they came back for future trainings, they would bring that device with them. So that really lessens the cost of what we'd need to put in over there. But as far as the funding for remodeling, we have that through private donations, the vouchers that we got from Microsoft, and the Centry Foundation would pay for the portable Smartboards that we would put in there. So the funding is there. If that's the, what the board decides to do, we have it. So I mentioned before that we want to utilize Jackson School as-is. We need a place to train. We're really worried about being able to schedule and get the training done. So we'd like to be able to go in and use the facilities. We have the school. We own that building. It belongs to the district. If we used it year-round, there would be some costs associated with that, electrical heat. We'd need to have a plan for cleaning, snow plowing, possibly add a keypad at the front entrance to make it easier to get into. We wouldn't invest any money in furniture. We're hoping to utilize existing furniture in the district to make that happen. So the other part of this plan, we wanted to put Jackson School up front just because we knew there was a lot of concern and a lot of questions about it, and we really wanted to get that up front. But that is only one part of the entire plan. If we don't have that, we'll do the best we can, but it is one component in this entire plan. We have this handout, which is our model, and what this model tries to do is show all the components of what we're trying to do on one page to make it easily, easy to visualize and to conceptualize. So we're going to go through each one of those components and explain it in a little more detail. So what are the components of a Technology Professional Development Plan? We have trainers. Who's going to do the training? Who are our experts? Who's going to help actually create those training opportunities and manage that? Those are our trainers. How are we going to deliver that professional development? And it's not just one way. We have multiple ways of giving professional development, and a lot of this is new. We're really breaking new territory here. This is something that hasn't really been done before, and we're trying to add on to that. Other component is planning. How do you plan what good professional development will be? How do you know what teachers need? How do you try and plan ahead for what's coming? So planning is an important component. And finally, we have the outcomes, what we're looking for. We're looking for the technology standards for teaching staff, and we're looking for increased technology skills for all of our staff.
To get started, when we looked at our, the training program that we had, we wanted to lay out, and what we did was take that slide Brian mentioned earlier and just kind of put it out, just the trainer piece of it. Really, our main focus here was to develop that well-structured PD because we want to address all staff and student needs. So you'll see the circle that's on the right side is going to be, that's going to be our people that we have in district. Obviously, we have our four TIS. We've already started our work with that. We've been developing a technology coaching webpage, so all the resources that we're going to be putting together are going to be able, be available to staff there. We'll be running those trainings within the buildings as well as doing the embedded work inside of teachers' classrooms. The library staff is doing an awesome job. They are actually putting together a digital citizenship program that'll run elementary through high school, and then we've been collaborating with them on developing some research tools for classroom teachers. The IT staff, they're going to be working a lot with the troubleshooting and actual equipment end. Again, we're not IT, so that, that was theirs. Okay? Our job is, is the actual classroom piece. But they also do collaborative trainings with us. I know within PJ Jacobs, I worked with David Moon, one of the IT staff, and we've run several trainings together. And then, of course, the staff that we have within the district. We have phenomenal teachers. And when possible, to actually have those people up in front of the group of teachers, teaching them and showing what they did, that's where we all started. So for them to have that opportunity is going to be very, very important to us. We do have the option to get outside vendors or trainers if people need an individual program that we don't have the level of expertise for. So that's the trainer organization. The planning for the PD needs, what we really wanted was a dynamic plan and ability to collect information from staff and act on that information quickly. Technology changes very, very quickly, so we have multiple ways to collect information from staff. At the beginning of the school year, they'll complete a teacher/learner profile. That is going to be something that we've put together. That's already made. It's a very simple Google form, but that's going to give the TIS staff a starting point. So when we're working with staff, we know where they're at. We want to meet them and give them the support that they need. They'll be meeting with us twice a year, talking about the teacher/learner profile, developing plans for how we can get inside their classrooms, help them, support them. And then the District Technology Assessment, the case, that piece of it is going to be a, that's a nationally recognized program that allows us to collect information from students, parents, and staff. That's going to give our score on a level of technology maturity. So we're going to be able to see how our district is progressing. The Technology Steering Committee, we already have those stakeholders in place, so our TIS staff's on there. We have representatives from IT, building administration, so we're able to bring concerns to that group and hopefully make any changes that are needed. And then the district staff will also complete a learner profile, very similar to what we've put together for the teachers. We're in the process of developing that because obviously our clerical staff has different needs than our classroom teachers do, and we want to make sure we address that as well. This is my favorite slide. As a classroom teacher who is involved in one or two things, the delivery of PD was key. When I sat and looked at what we had, this is the part that really has me the most excited. When we looked at the data collected from our own teachers, 63% of them said they only received training once a semester. They were able to identify that the popular choice was getting training off-site. The second one... The second one was that embedded coaching within the building. In the past, we've tried to focus our trainings around using institute days, using our in-service days. And that model was what we had. That's what we could make work, but it's just, we ran into a lot of issues with that. After school, we have a lot of coaches. We have advisors for different clubs and organizations. Teachers are doing at the elementary levels, they're doing leadership meetings, team meetings. We can't get all the teachers. That option just doesn't work. The early release days, those days, building-level stuff is going on. So it's very hard to get teachers out. And then the institute days, we have multiple other initiatives. So we ran into a lot of problems when we looked at that for scheduling. So what we tried to do was really look at it from a totally new approach. We've got our collaborative workshops that are going to be run after school. They can be run in the summer. Those can be done in the building or the tech training center. We have embedded coaching during the day when we're actually in the classroom, offering support to the teachers. Right as they're teaching the lesson, we can be there and troubleshoot, help them deal with issues that they're having. We have self-directed learning. This would be looking at resources that are available. Google has some great training resources that if a staff member is extremely busy, they can access those on their device on their schedule. We still do have institute day and early release. The team teaching piece is very similar to the embedded instruction. There, we would envision more of an approach where the classroom teacher might teach the direct content, and as the tech integration specialist, I would come in. I know I've been working with the junior highs already, setting up for next year, and I'm going to teach the kids about YouTube and Google Docs and Drives and getting their accounts set up. And then collaborating with what we have access to within the community. We've already started working with UWSP on some telepresence. It's an interesting process. I'm just starting it now, but I've been working with Dr. Roth over there on setting that up and getting teachers in the district trained on that and learning how to use that equipment. So really here, what we have is, we can provide support to staff. And it's not on our schedule, or when we can possibly supply training, it's on their schedule, and that's what they need. And then the less fun part, because I'm a teacher and I actually want to do stuff, is the standards and the skills piece. Here, what we had, the slide that Brian showed did a great job breaking this down, but really what we're looking at are our two main pieces. We have the skills that we want staff to have. The Google Apps will be a required training for all staff. We have that differentiated for advanced-level users and then users who need basic instruction and need to get started. The Moodle, which is our learning management system, that's going to be for all secondary staff. We have multiple trainings set up. Again, we're using that differentiated model. If a user already has Moodle and has instruction on it, they can go to a more advanced training. The device rollout and the trainings that go along with it for the tablets, the laptops, and the Chromebooks, that will be for all staff. The device and software skills, what we're looking at there is if individuals need basic hardware training, getting their computer turned on, what are some simple troubleshooting, and then software skills outside of those required pieces. This might be a refresher on using Microsoft Office. And then with the teacher choice piece and the differentiation, what we're really looking at here is getting the teachers involved in that process. That's where our meetings are so important. I don't want a teacher to go to a flip session if what they really need is help with screencasting. So the differentiated piece will allow us to provide trainings for different options that will meet whatever the staff members, that group of staff members we have and give them training on that skill. And as Brian mentioned earlier, the technology skills, we're using the ISTI standards. And of course, everything's going to work within our district curriculum.
That's a nice segue there Jeff made with the curriculum because one of the concepts that we learned about when we started doing the research for our technology plan was this concept that's being used now. It's called TPAC, which is technological pedagogical content knowledge. Really, what it's talking about is the fact that you have to use technology to teach your content and teach your curriculum. So if you look at those three circles that are up there, what we're really looking at is where those circles intersect. It's not just about teaching technology. It's about how you teach, the pedagogical part of it, and it's about the content, what you're teaching. It could be social studies. It could be third-grade math. And it's also about that knowledge of using the technology. So I think, I like that slide because it's a good model. It really shows that what we're trying to get at here. It's not just how to use Google. It's, okay, now you know how to use Google, so what? How can you use it to teach a third grader how to write better? That's really what we're trying to get at with this plan. And there's a lot of research that backs up what we're trying to do.
So this slide is really just focusing on the coaching piece and the role that TIS are taking on this year. And the figure here really sums up the cycle that will be taking place with everyone that we come in contact with and how we would do presentations or working one-on-one with a teacher. So if you would take a look here, it starts out with this embedded coaching idea, and that's the piece that Brian had spoke about where we were talking about change and that with the embedded coaching component, working along with the teachers, that the rate of concentration with how it works best is 95% versus a change of anywhere between 6% to 19%. Within this, as Jeff had mentioned, the TIS would be meeting with teaching staff twice a year, and that would be based on the learner profile that they would fill out here at the beginning of the next school year. We would also be assessing needs. So in this meeting that we have with staff, it's really a quick five-minute meeting. They've already filled out some information, so we have background knowledge on their interest in technology, where they are within the standards, and what they're kind of interested in going with. So the five-minute would be, this is what you said in the learner profile. Are you still interested in following this? Tell me a little bit more about what you see, how I can help you with this. And then we move on from there and set up times if need be. Along with that, the embedded coaching kind of sums up the fact that we still will be working with the teachers. So part of, some teachers just may want us in there just to troubleshoot. Or just to kind of sit back and be like, okay, am I doing this right? And just get feedback from someone, and they don't want us involved at all. And that's part of a role that we can play. Or, as Jeff mentioned, we could do more of a team teaching desire. So it's really trying to take the teacher where the teacher is at and growing them with the use of technology in their curriculum. Part of that is also asking the teacher to be reflective and to make revisions within what's going on. It's not, those words sound pretty time-intensive, but it really isn't geared towards that at Along with those revisions, then we go back and we would assess the needs and practice and look at the instruction and make tweaks as we go along here. Part of the nice thing about this is that we're bringing the professional development to the staff themselves. Whereas in the past, it's been, okay, let's meet in the library. Let's meet at SPAS. Let's go to this one sit-and-get type session where now we're coming in and we're bringing it to them. We're putting them in an environment that they're already extremely comfortable in, their classroom, and trying to guide them along in their growth with this technology The next slide talks about how the professional development is really differentiated. So Jeff had mentioned that that was part of it. And as I spoke earlier with you guys, I believe in April, and kind of talked about where we were in the past and what needed to come forward, a lot of these came out of the surveys and discussions and then research that we had as far as how we should go about implementing the professional development here with technology. So as mentioned, teacher choice, then subject and content area was really important. We found with the one-to-one first phase of it that if we could focus the tech piece on, let's say we have a bunch of music teachers sitting there, if we could bring music to them and how would implement and change their curriculum, they really found it more advantageous than just a, okay, this is how we do it, now you think of ways to do it in your classroom. So that would be the subject/content focus. Again, grade level and could be ability level, which is huge. A lot of people said on the survey from staff was that they wanted something at their level. They felt a bit intimidated when someone in there appeared to know a lot more, and so sometimes it shut them down from learning from it. So we wanted to make sure that we met them at their level there, not only ability, but skill level. And then you also have the learning styles, you can't forget. So I'm a pretty visual person, and I like videos to start out something. But there are people that don't necessarily learn that way. And so we want to certainly take that into more focus when we start planning the professional development component of it. Also with this is we want to bring in other possibilities, and the intent is to make sure that they're more reflective on their teaching practices, but we need to make sure that we are meeting people where they're at skill-wise. And sometimes that could mean bringing in a conference or some type of workshop that we put on that not only supports our staff, but maybe even possibility to the community around us or central Wisconsin. And so we've just tossed some ideas around and how we would go about doing this and offering this type of professional development to those teachers who learn best in this fashion. Some of them could be hosting something like CISA V puts on a mini-Google summit in the spring. So maybe we could have something like that here. There's a big movement in the technology arena nationally on these ed camps, which is really quite a very interesting take on how you run a conference. And it's not how you would think. So typically, you go to conferences, you sign up for the workshops you want, you sit down, you sign in, you get all your packets, and then you just break up and go. But it's really delivered in a model of laid-back and, you know, we're going to take it from what you want to learn from. And you walk in and there's a presenter welcomes everyone and says, okay, what do we want to talk about? And someone can raise their hand, I'd like to know more about Chromebooks. And so they tally up that, and I would like to know more how to use forms in Google. And I would like to know how to flip a classroom. And then you ask those audience members if there's someone that would be willing to just simply lead or guide those areas. And then they just kind of sign up and go to the session that they want to go to. And it's, it sounds informal, but it's actually very welcoming and very, not so intrusive like some of those formal conferences can be. I'm not thinking of the right word there.
Inclusive, right?
Yes, thank you. That's the one I wanted.
Anyway, this is the end of our presentation. I just wanted to outline the next steps here. Step number one, there'll probably be questions from the board. We're also seeking more input, and we want to have more discussion on the plan. As I mentioned before, it's a dynamic plan. This isn't written in stone, and we are looking to change it and modify it as we go. The June 23 board meeting, we'll probably have some action on what you'd like us to do with the Technology Professional Development Center. We'll continue PD planning and development for the summer. We already have that planned out, but there's still a lot more to do. And also for the upcoming school year, we have a lot of work to do. A lot of those trainings, if you looked in the documents that were provided for you, that's why we had things that said, you know, technology standards and content. We don't know yet. We're going to be developing those trainings once we get the information from the learner profile. That's really going to help guide us in planning for what's upcoming in the future. I think this is a great plan. We have a fantastic team. I think all of the components work really well together, and we're looking forward to implementing it. So at this time, we can answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Can I just make three points?
You bet.
First of all, thank you to the team and to the larger steering committee. I do want to make three points which are important to note about this plan. Actually, I think there's four. Number one is that we are using currently the LMC and will continue to use the LMC at Jackson School temporarily in order to deliver professional development planning. We don't have any other place to do that from, so we are using that on a temporary basis. The LMC does have air conditioning, and it's the most available site. Number two is that Jackson School, it never really was the only place. When this was brought forward two years ago in the spring of 2012 by Mary Jo Lechner, John Volendorf, and myself, we identified Jackson School because it was the only site available that we had in the district that could accommodate what we've visioned at that time would be Technology Professional Development Center. But as Brian mentioned and as one of the other presenters mentioned, the vision then has been changed because of the mobile devices. Now, that's pretty critical because this thing is evolutionary. And what we want to do is wherever this ends up being, we're well aware of the consolidated task force and some of the recommendations that they've talked about. So for example, if Jackson School becomes used by the recommendations of the CTF and approval by the board for something different, whether it's the charter school or the alternative school or whatever it is that the board decides, the Technology Professional Development Center can be located in another facility. It will probably cost more to remodel that space, but it's not locked in. It would be the ideal space, but if the board chose not to do that, that's the board's decision. Keep in mind that right now, on the slide that showed the dollars, that the district would not spend any money from its budget to do that. That Century has allotted dollars in its plan to stock it with devices, whatever those devices are needed, based on what the District Technology Steering Committee says. The CyPress Microsoft funds, and then businesses in the community have stepped forward and said, we think that this is so critical a need that we're willing to fund the rest of the remodeling costs that are going to be needed. The other piece is if we were to show you a diagram of that wing of Jackson that we showed two years ago, in discussions with Brian, they've scaled back what it is that they initially want because our priority, as we have said all along, are teachers. That's our absolute priority right now, given the infusion of technology by Century. But we have half of our staff that are either EAs who need exactly the same kinds of training if they're going to be of greatest assistance to teachers in classrooms, and the other part of our employees, custodial maintenance, food service, bus drivers, clerical, support staff, that could benefit greatly from technology training. For example, in the case of bus drivers, there are great simulation programs that we could train 30 to 40 drivers at a time on certain aspects of safety and driving a bus. The same is true with food service. In terms of nutrition, dietetics, and how to deliver that food service program can be done initially and ongoingly, if there's such a word, using technology. I'm an English teacher, so I have some flexibility here. So it's really important for the board to understand that, that this thing has evolved and that there are pieces of it, some of which were identified as misconceptions that I wanted to be sure and clear up. But the other point, which this group did not address, which is, that was not their purpose, it was to focus on teachers, we still have half of 1,000 employees that we need to bring on in a sustained technology training program. This is not going to be, as was stated, a one-time deal. This is going to be recurring year after year after year. Technology is not going away. It's only becoming more complicated. It's growing faster, and we have to step in front of it in order to get our hands around it and involve our folks in that training. So just a couple more things just to add on to what they said. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification there, too. Our one-to-one laptop program is relocating to Jackson School for the summer because the power will be down at SPAS for two weeks, and we can't do any work on the laptops without power. So we're using it to do our imaging and our triage process with the laptops out there.
Question, you said three classroom-sized spaces?
Four, four, because of...
This room up to the partition divider wall, would that be considered the size of a classroom?
Well, we went and toured it, and we looked at, it's the first two spaces when you walk in there. There's a divider in between that, and one of them actually kind of has sort of a third space, but it's a sort of a natural with the walls that are in there that we could have four, potentially, we could be running four trainings at once if we needed to.
It's bigger room than this, though.
Yes, oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, definitely.
Layer with that room and the dividers. Each one of those dividers became one classroom. So is this whole expanse one classroom, or is each divider going to be one section of the classroom?
Each divider would be one section of the classroom.
Four, that size?
Yeah.
As I'm now on the committee, pointed out that I like the fact that, you know, you've now gone mobile because, I mean, mobile devices really don't have a place in being stationary. I think that needs to continue. As I've said at the committee, I would like to see it at the schools or something. The perception is reality when you keep bringing up Jackson. So when you bring it forth, personally, I think it's important for, if you believe space is important, to just say space. space is important, to just say space, not Jackson. Just you need space. Just like you've said, if you need it at a different location, wherever works in, because we don't know what the Super Task Force is going to come forward with. And unfortunately, because it keeps coming up, that's where all the confusion is all the time, where people think, okay, it's already spoken for, it's not spoken for, and it's not spoken for. So it just shouldn't be brought up. After the last meeting that I went with you guys, it was brought up about the potential of using multipurpose rooms in the schools, having a conference room, something like that. And when most of the training is taking place after school and during the summer, that means that, you know, there isn't going to be, well, there shouldn't be a lot of dislocation. And if we have a multipurpose room, that can be a conference room, staff meeting room, or whatever in the building, because the surveys, the teaching staff wants it in their building. They don't want to go to the learning center and have your portable smartboard and then they go back to their classroom and they don't have one. Or theirs is a different model. So those were some of the concerns that were brought forth. Another issue was brought up that there are some teachers who are really doing the technology. And what's happened is the students will come for questions and the teacher will direct them to the technology. It's more like an online where they don't want to assist the students. And that's where I think we need to be really careful that some of these teachers aren't going too far with it. And back to the whole Jackson School thing, you know, while we may have been told that that is an optimal place, we were also told with the Life Skill Center that one place was an optimal place. And then we ended up finding a different spot that, you know, even though we were told there was no other spot. So again, I highly suggest you pull the correlation to Jackson School out of there when you make the recommendation.
I guess I would respond to that by saying I really want the best possible plan that we can come up with. And that is an important component of it. I think it gives us the flexibility that we need. We are unaware of any other space that we would actually get to, you know, dictate when we would use it. I would love to have another room like we have over here at the Bliss PDC, where we would actually have the ability to schedule and plan for that. I would love to have those spaces in the schools that you're talking about, but they don't exist.
Well, the problem is that when you present it and you say at Jackson, and then in the second breath you say, but it can be anywhere, it's sort of a contradiction. So I'm just-
Okay. Well, from my perspective, it's there, we have it. It's not being used right now, those spaces that we're talking about. So we would like the chance to see how this would work and get in there and do some trainings this fall and to really see if this is a good idea. And I think it is. I think, I really don't know how we would pull off these small trainings with 15 people or less unless we have some space that we actually have some say over. If we have to spend most of our time trying to find the right day and the right school, it's just going to be hard. I mean, could we do it? Yeah, we could make do, but I want this to be the best.
Jeff?
You keep saying there's no space anywhere. Both PJ's and Ben are not even close to capacity. PJ has empty rooms that are available. Our prior board member, Bob Larson, touted the fact of, when we were talking about the expeditionary learning, of how much space is in both of those schools. They are more centrally located than Jackson is. Have we looked at that as an opportunity? Because it's a win-win. You have a permanent facility in an existing school that I would highly doubt we would think about closing, first of all, if the Super, I'm sorry, the Consolidated Committee comes back with recommendations. Number two is they're not, your TISs are not offsite at any time. They're onsite at two particular schools. If they're training, during the downtime of the training, they're there as a resource in those two schools. I just, I don't understand the concept of why you want to all of a sudden move everything to the other side of town that we've pretty much mothballed because we said it's not a viable facility.
Well, we're not talking about moving everything there. That's not where all of the professional development's going to take place.
I understand. You're looking for permanent places to be able to have meetings. Have you looked at the two junior highs?
Well, as at this point, no principal stepped forward and said, yes, we have lots of room for you. You can have two or three rooms at our junior high schools. I don't know where that would be.
There is a huge misconception if somebody thinks that there's room at PJ and Ben Franklin. The nature of a secondary school scheduling is absolutely void of the possibility of segregating the kind of spaces that we're talking about, dedicated rooms for technology training. If you look at a room utilization study of any of our secondary buildings, it doesn't mean that you have a free room all day long. What it means is, is that when you schedule kids and teachers in the classrooms, that a certain percentage of all of those rooms combined are used. So the maximum would be 100% of the rooms 100% of the time. But that's really not possible because you don't have that many kids, nor do we have that many sections, nor do we have that many teachers to teach all of those sections. So there is no space available at any of the three secondary schools that you can say, we would dedicate four rooms, even if you had two at each, all day long and outfit them with technology. It just isn't going to happen. And anybody who's done scheduling, I've done scheduling for a school of 1,600 and I've done scheduling for a school of 4,000. It just doesn't exist. Because the room utilization has to do with the maximum space available for the maximum number of kids for their selection of courses. So yeah, it would be nice to say that because they're centrally located, we could use them. But the fact is, is that you won't be able to use them for what this is. The other point that I want to make is something that you just alluded to, Brian. There are, I think, as I counted them, six different pieces of professional development. There's the TPDC, there's embedded coaching in the classroom, there's modeling, there are, help me out, what were the other workshops?
Workshops and classrooms, on-demand.
On-demand, and then the online. So the TPDC is just one component. But I'm going to come back to this issue because it's something that is not talked enough about by the board. We have 500 employees that don't have classrooms. We have to educate them in technology. We have that responsibility to those employees, just as we do to teachers and EAs and administrators. And some of them have never been on a computer. If we want to upgrade our entire staff, all of our employees with technology PD, we have to provide the means by which to do that. And that's really important. It would also put us way ahead of any school district in Wisconsin. I don't know of a school district in Wisconsin that has said, it's important to educate all of our employees to technology train, technology train them. We think it's critical that they do that. If we're going to take the time to do that for kids and teachers and administrators and EAs, we need to do that for the other part of our employee base as well.
Follow-up, Jeff?
Yes. While I can appreciate you have experience in doing that, Attila, it still begs the question, have we looked at that as a possibility?
Yes, we have looked at the availability of rooms at Ben Franklin and at PJ. And we can bring John Volendorf and Connie Mieger here on the 23rd, and they will tell you it's not possible.
Okay. When did we look at that?
During the process of looking at where we were going to have a center.
Okay. Did they produce some type of report for that?
No, they did not, Jeff. We looked at the scheduling of the buildings over the last two years and identified whether or not there were rooms available.
Okay.
But we'd be glad to produce a report for you.
Okay. And looking at that as a possibility when they do the scheduling, to consolidate that scheduling to make availability for those two rooms, when they look at that as a possibility. Because they're looking at it, whatever I'm making my schedule, all right, here's all the rooms that I have available. If they do all their scheduling and say there's two rooms missing now out of that scheduling, can they still accomplish that? That's what I want to know. Because they've looked at it as a totality, as opposed to looking and saying, all right, minus two rooms here and minus two rooms there, can I still do the same scheduling? That's the question that I have. And I don't think it was probably asked that way.
Well, it was asked in another way, but got the same result. We'll be glad to produce a report for you.
I guess, Jeff, I would just like to add, you know, that I've done a lot of professional development. And planning and scheduling is a big deal. It's hard. You have, you come up with a good idea for professional development, then you have to find the right date, then you have to find the room. And right now, that's a big obstacle for us. And what we're asking for is some flexibility where we actually have a say, where we don't have to go through a decision-making process of one of the other schools if the space belongs to them.
And I can appreciate that. But my concern is, while the vouchers that we get, the $418,000, you're telling us it's not going to be a permanent facility over at Jackson, but yet we're going to, for lack of a better term, blow $400,000 to upgrade that facility. It's not going to be a permanent. Whereas if we looked at a solution within our schools and utilized that 418 to have two rooms at Ben and to have two rooms at PJ, it's money better spent, at least in my mind, because we're not, you know, when opening up Jackson, there are expenses. Well, I guess my next question is, what expenses do we have in, well, the board didn't know about Jackson being reopened, what expenses do we have in reopening Jackson?
Well, first of all, Jackson has not been reopened. Jackson is being used as a facility that, for a need that we have right now. And administratively, we have the option to do that, to use that facility because we have no place to go to do this temporarily. If you're asking about ongoing annual costs, is that what you're asking?
Well, what was the cost to temporarily use Jackson right now?
Well, as Brian put up on the slide, it was minor because the LMC is already air-conditioned and they're going to cobble together whatever furniture that they have there in order to provide this. It's a very makeshift kind of situation, but we don't have any place to go. Now, to open up Jackson as a scaled-down version of the original plan for the TPDC, the costs were up on the board. Centri's going to provide $75,000 for the devices. And in order to make those rooms really what they should be for PD training, you do have to put in air conditioning and you do have to put in other kinds of infrastructure. And again, the community businesses, as well as those CyPress funds, would take care of that. We're also, as Brian and I discussed about a week ago, reserving two rooms for future use, that is for expansion. And I don't want to misguide the board at all here about whether or not Jackson would be permanent. If we decide to use, if the board approves the use of Jackson and the remodeling of it for a TPDC, that would become a center for that technology training. But again, there are five other elements to the training. So it's not just there. It's not the only place where the training will occur. So the cost of opening part of Jackson is outlined there. The cost of maintaining Jackson on a regular, ongoing basis is about $42,000 a year. And that includes everything from a custodian, to snow plowing, electricity, all the security, tip, tax, title out the door. It's about $42,000 a year. And that was for seven rooms, as opposed to the four that they scaled back to.
So just that I'm clear, we have not spent any money on Jackson to date in doing anything dealing with these CyPress, Centri Foundation, or private donations.
We had to bring internet connectivity back out to this school. So we had, there's fiber optic out there. We had to go through charter to have that reactivated, had that fiber lit so that we could have internet out there. And that does cost, we pay for that. But we can't run, we can't run the one-to-one program. We have nowhere to go unless we have the internet connection. So that's for the imaging process with the laptops.
But no other funds have been used other than that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you answered my first one, which was, what was the ongoing maintenance? So to do the remodeling that's necessary, excuse me, the majority of it's picked up by the CyPress vouchers, is that right?
Yeah.
Can you just, you know, not having been here very long, can you just tell me what the CyPress vouchers are?
That was a, Microsoft had a lawsuit, and there was a settlement. And as part of that, the result of that, they came up with a program to reimburse districts for their technology purchases. So we went back several years and were able to show what we had spent on technology. And Microsoft reimbursed us for those purchases. So it was a windfall of money that we received.
So is that money just sitting out there waiting to be used in a fund or something?
Yes.
We've segregated that money based on what we knew was coming down the pipe.
Okay, okay.
So it would give, it would give the board the option that it wouldn't otherwise have. And those are one-time monies.
Okay. So then my next question is, you've talked about lots of different types of training, the workshops and the embedded in the school and so forth. Have you queried teachers overall as to what they feel is the best training for them?
Yes, that was part of that technology survey that was provided to you in the board orientation packet. We have that. But we gave a summary of the results. And I mean, the top thing that they said is that they really wanted, they wanted face-to-face classes, small groups, preferably offsite during the day, but that's hard to manage. Also, the second thing was coaching. The idea of having these people available was the second best option.
Okay. And then with that, when the teachers leave their classroom, or when the teachers receive this training where they're leaving their cla, I presume they're leaving their classroom, to go to a workshop or go to a training, like if it happens at Jackson School, how does that work? What happens with their classroom?
Well, we're not planning on pulling all the teachers out during the school day. Most of these trainings would be after school or in the summer.
Early release days.
Yeah, early release days and institute days we could use, too. I'm not saying that we would never have a training where we would pull some teachers out, but it would be a very limited usage of that approach. We have to fund the subs and it's not a good practice to pull teachers out all the time. But that does happen with professional development. If it's something special that comes along, like if I had an opportunity to offer professional development in something very unique and it was a one-time deal, I would probably offer that to some teachers. But that's not part of the plan, to pull teachers out during the day on a regular basis.
And then I guess my last question is, the coaches, I see our esteemed coaching staff here. These guys, I know all have classes because my kids have gone to, have been at least with two of them. Are they going to be able to float from school to school? What's the coaching?
They're full-time. They do not have teaching responsibilities. They're teaching teachers now. That is their job.
Okay, I didn't know that.
It's a new rule.
Cool.
Friday was our last day in the classroom.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right. Kind of good and sad at the same time.
That's what we didn't have before, is that ability to actually, we had Liz Steele and she's fantastic. And she's dedicated to SPASH. We've tweaked that a little bit, too, and, you know, in terms of what she's going to be doing, a lot of the same things. But also, we added the learner profile on now and the chance to actually meet with every teacher two times a year. Now we've quadrupled our coaching staff. So we think it's going to be a great thing.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, just one more thing. Lisa, you had mentioned that teachers, and I don't know if it's conversations you've had with teachers, about they don't want to leave their buildings. Actually, in the survey, it was a pretty significant number. And Brian, you have that?
Yeah, that was a number one choice, but I think it was also tied into the fact that, you know, it was the idea that they would have dedicated time. It's kind of hard to, what they said is that they would like to have training during the day outside of their teaching responsibilities. That was a number one choice. And the other choice would be workshops, you know, face-to-face with small groups, not the large groups. You know, an example for that was at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of professional development for Google during Institute Day. Well, we had everyone trying to run trainings with 60 people and it just didn't work. They're too large. We didn't really do a good job of providing that to all the staff. So we're trying to think of every way possible that we can reach teachers and give them the best professional development that we can.
If I could just point to this map just for a second and I can get out of your way here. So this was the original, the original design here. And the original design was, this was an entrance, the parking is over here. That this area here was going to be used for a collaborative social area so that when people came in, they would check in for their session, and the sessions would be held over here, and then they would be able to go. This station right here was going to be used for the TISs, for their office- This station right here was going to be used for the TISs, for their office space. And these spaces were then going to be used for the actual training. One or more of these was going to be a dedicated space for traditional PC, sit-and-get kinds of things, because we have people who are not versatile with, with mobility. These spaces over here, we're going to have these walls removed and we're going to be used for collaborative spaces, similar to the long lines of the PD Center over at the university. October, can you flip over the page where the other one is? So as the program has evolved, this was another phase of it. And so you can see now more clearly what the, the intentions were. And there were going to be carts with those devices in them and a lounge equipped with round cafeterias dot tables and wall-mounted displays with, can't read that word there. So it's scaled back. So those rooms there and this room here are going to be used, tagged for future use, for expansion, depending on how quickly we can get the rest of our staff, the non-teachers and the EAs, food service and so on, trained, which, which, which we're going to need. So I, I wanted to show you exactly what that was going to look like. Thanks. Thanks, October.
Kim, you've been waiting.
I, I do want to say, just to go through what Lisa said in the beginning, is that one of the first Consolidated Task Force, it came up that, you know, we were supposed to use Jackson School because it was already taken off the table for these two programs. So it's not something that she's just heard. It's came up numerous times every time I go to the meeting. And I think enough people have heard it that they're going to have another deep discussion on it. Couple question is, is if, and I don't think anybody's against the technology development plan. We believe we all need it. We, we need to teach all of our staff properly to use the equipment and to, and to move on. I don't think that's a question. It's the space is what we need. I, I believe the Consolidated Task Force will not put anything into place until 2017, if I remember correctly. They're implementing some. If we allow you to use Jackson School, can you get out of there and what's the cost if we have to have you move, if we decide to use that?
What, what we're asking for right now is there is no cost, besides actually adding in mobile, you know, the portable smart boards.
Okay.
We wouldn't remodel until, unless the board approved that. The remodeling would make it a more, we, and we don't know. If we get over there and we use it without remodeling, we're not really sure how that's going to work. It's sort of a test because the bathrooms are designed for elementary students, you know. There may be things that we, we haven't expected, but we would like to try to do that.
Well, my question is, is if you remodel, you take it and remodel and use this, I'm going to round it to 650,000, okay? And then the task force says, no, we're going to be moving, you know, elementary over there, remodeling the bathrooms. I mean, I'm sure the teachers are going to really like that, to use grown-up bathrooms over there. And we have to find another space for you guys to go.
We wouldn't do that, Kim. We wouldn't come forward with a request to spend money to remodel and not know what the Consolidated Task Force is going to recommend.
And that's why I wouldn't approve this project right now.
Well, I'm not, we're not asking you to. So the Consolidated Task Force, I talked to Tom today, they're drafting part of the final report. I'm hoping that on June 23rd, that they'll come forward with a final report.
I, I'm hoping too, but I don't believe they'd be ready.
And the other, the other piece to this is this, that certain technology infrastructure work that would be done at Jackson, including air conditioning, would actually be beneficial and could be used by whatever use Jackson has. So it wouldn't be money wasted.
Well, I agree with it. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, are we going to spend this kind of money in a Jackson School? And then the Consolidated Task Force says, no, we need to use it elsewhere. Are you guys able or willing, you won't have a choice in a way, if the board decides, to go elsewhere, such as, have you looked at the professional building? I, I know you went through a lot of different things and people keep throwing, you know, like confetti at you and it kind of drops around you. But the professional building, we own it. Can it be used? It's, it's on this side of the, the river. I know, you know, years ago, oh my God, you were on the other side of the river. And that's just the traveling aspect of having our staff go there. And I'm sure, I'm hoping that you've looked at multiple, multiple, um, space to use. And that would be my biggest fear is that we say, okay, go ahead and do it until the task force gets their stuff implemented and then we have to pull you out of there.
Well, we're going to have to go somewhere. So, and we have 500 devices, well, probably more like 300 because the staff already have laptops at SPASH. 300 devices that we have to give out. We also have to get several thousand devices ready. I don't know if we actually have the space at Tech Services to do that. So we, we need the space. It's really what it comes down to.
Yeah. And I mean, you're using Jackson School. I, I under this, understand the concern that the board wasn't aware of that you guys were in there. And I understand why you're there. You need the space to do your work since SPASH is not going to be available. Could that space be utilized and maybe remodel a bathroom? You know, and?
Well, what we're asking to do is to try it out and not remodel anything and see how it works. Because we have to get these trainings ready. We, as of now, we have nowhere to go.
So that's going to be your request when you come on June 23rd? Is, okay, let's, let's do the development plan and we are going to use Jackson School as a temporary basis until the Consolidated Task Force gets completed?
That's yet to be determined.
That's not, no, that's not going to be a request. I'm, I'm sorry to contradict you, Brian. We're, we're not going to request the board to get, to give permission to temporarily use Jackson. We can do that administratively if we have that crushing need. What we're going to come down the 23rd with is a, depending on the Consolidated Task Force and the timing of that, depending on that, is coming forward to the board and saying, we would like to create a technology professional development center using these funds to do it. Temporarily, we're going to use Jackson School. We have nowhere else to go.
But now you just used the word temporarily and before you said, no, that we're going to stick there. I don't think, I, I'm hoping the board.
Okay, hang on. I'm stepping in. We're an hour and 10 minutes into this. It's an information-only item. So.
Well, Angel, I'm going to stop you right there because people have asked multiple questions and I haven't even asked more than four questions.
Sure, I've got a question waiting.
Yeah. So can I continue? I just hoping that you come for what the board can approve, because otherwise it's not going to be approved. I'm hoping that, because we need to be smart with this. So I'm finished now. Thank you.
Alex?
What other commercial properties in town have you looked at?
We haven't looked at any commercial properties because we don't own that. That would involve, you know, buying real estate and bidding on things that, we own this property, it's, belongs to the district. So that's why we've looked at that.
So possibly there are some options in the community as far as commercial properties that might be better off spending that money purchasing a cheaper building versus sticking money into a building that needs a lot of upgrades. For instance, buying a building that already has air conditioning throughout it. Roughly 9,600 square feet, $140,000, Masonic Building, the, the lodge there, that one's already ready to go. It's already got chairs, it's got all kinds of spaces. Have you looked at those kind of buildings in town?
I have not, but possibly last year that was something that was investigated. I, I don't have that information.
We did not look at purchasing or leasing or renting any property because whatever remodel would have to be done, would have to be done similarly. While a building may have air conditioning, what is needed in those rooms is going to be exactly what's needed at Jackson. I will tell you that the architects and engineers who went through Jackson School, when, when we first said, if we had to develop a center over here, what would you recommend? The architects and engineers said, this building has got great bones. This building is meant for something like this, partially because of the collapsible walls. Because you don't have to break down walls and reconfigure rooms. They're already there. So we didn't look at that because we didn't think that was responsible. We didn't want to, we didn't want to purchase buildings when we had one sitting vacant.
With such a large building, how are you going to section off the heat for wintertime?
Well, that building is heated to a certain temperature anyway. It would be a matter, the building is already sectioned off in terms of its heating.
Right. So all the corridors are going to be heated at the temperature that's needed?
No, no. Because if, when you look at the diagram, it would be that one section on the left-hand side, right there. The LMC is already air-conditioned. None of these rooms here are air-conditioned. So when you talk about heating it, we're talking about heating this part of it and this part of it probably would have to be heated too, because it's done by sections. So I haven't looked at this, I haven't talked to Don Keck about this, but I would imagine that there are sections of the building that you could turn on and off or lower their temperatures.
It's all boilers. That's correct, right?
I'm sorry?
The school is all heated by boilers?
Yes.
What's the condition of the boilers?
They're in pretty good shape. They won't have to be replaced.
For how long do they figure?
Oh, I, I haven't done that. Alex, I can get that for you. Be glad to do that.
I just, I think they were just replaced right before we mothballed it.
Okay.
Chris?
Angel, I haven't asked.
Wait, sorry. I think there was a question over here first. Was there anyone?
Well, I haven't asked any questions yet, but considering the time and this is for information only and it's going to come back to us, I would really like to call the question so that we can move forward. And if people have more questions.
There's nothing to call. It's just information only.
Okay. Thank you.
But I just want to say, this is the time to discuss. So when they come back for their.
Exactly.
For their approval. I don't want to have more questions and then we're delaying you again.
Exactly.
If, if Brian agrees with me, but, so.
Well, that's what this is for. We want to discuss it. But I also want to make the point too, you know, I realize that there's some controversy with Jackson School, but it's one component of the plan. We have a fantastic plan. We need the space. We have the space. And it's the board's decision to make. So we'll come back with it and see what you guys want to do.
Anything else to finish?
I'm just going to make a comment is that, I mean, I'm hoping the Consolidated Task Force comes up with their plan too before you guys come back, because then we can give you an answer. I know it's a lot of work, but I don't think they're going to, I don't think it's going to be ready by the end of June. I can hope. But I'm a realistic, I'm realistic, so good luck.
Lisa?
I would concur with Kim. I really think before this board even considers a location, that we wait for the Super Task Force to come back with their recommendations. We've been saying that over and over and over. I don't think anybody has an issue with the training. That's not a problem. And, you know, there, there are rooms available throughout the district. Most of the training, like you said, it's going to be after school during the summer. There won't be the classrooms being used. I mean, there, there should be no reason that we can't work together to make this, to make this a success. You're not going to be having the, the building or the rooms where there, there are workstations. It's portable devices, so, yeah.
Okay, Jeff?
Two quick comments. The first one is, we keep going back to the survey saying that they want an off-site. We never asked the question in the survey, do you want it in your school and out of your classroom? That was never asked. That's an important question that should have been asked. But secondly, you keep saying that this training is going to happen in the evenings and during summer school. Well, why wouldn't we have classrooms then available at either of our junior highs? If that's the majority of the time when you're going to be doing that training?
That has to do with the planning and organizing of it. I mean, right now, we, we can't just go in and tell a teacher that we're taking over their classroom. We don't have that ability to do that. Likewise, the LMC, we have to ask for permission. And our buildings are used a lot by outside groups. So what we're asking for is the ability to have control over the schedule for scheduling that space. That, that's, that's why.
Well, we should take priority over outside.
It, it, it's another obstacle. It's a hurdle.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I just say to the three of you, really, your coaches, none of you are classroom teachers anymore?
My car is full.
I, I am.
I'm moving out of my car.
I am sad. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you.
Absolutely.
You are three amazing, amazing teachers. And I'm really gr, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing, but I'm really grateful for the time you've invested with our students very much.
They were aware of how they did the technology when I was in school here? They had the long blue bus where they taught all the kids to type and they went from school to school.
The magic school bus.
All right. Board meeting broadcasts.
That's Brian and Dan.
The board had asked what it would cost to be able to provide live TV broadcasting of the school board meeting. So in conjunction with Dan Malmosky, we came up with some possibilities and they're outlined in this memo. At the bare minimum, we're going to need to purchase a new camera. The camera that we're using currently does not belong to us. If the city wants it back, we're out of the live streaming business completely because we do not have a camera. That would be option A is just to replace the camera. With that, we can continue what we are currently doing. For B, if we added some equipment, we could do a live broadcast of this meeting on the cable channel. That would cost $2,543. If we wanted to add the capability of rebroadcasting a meeting several days later or as many times as we wanted thereafter, that would cost $12,000. We would need to buy a dedicated video server to store that video at SPASH. If you add up the cost of the live channel broadcast and the rebroadcasting with the camera, that would be a total of $18,000. So the options are, you can approve all of these or just pieces. But I would recommend at the bare minimum of a, a new camera. If we don't have that, we won't even be able to do the live streaming.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I'm always asking questions. Is, is D just a, a total?
Yes.
It's just ABC?
That's everything combined.
Okay.
If you wanted to know what the whole package would cost.
That's the Lexus down there at the bottom, the Cadillac.
Yes, Kim. Did they ask for their camera back?
No, but they could. That's the point is that, yeah. I mean, they haven't.
They wouldn't have to replace the camera now. We could replace the camera down the road if they want theirs back.
Yeah, if they ask for it the day before a board meeting, we won't be able to livestream though.
Well, they would have a lot of people in the city mad, but I, I understand. But I just want to say, I mean, they're not asking for it back. So we could save $4,000 right now and then have to pay for, and then purchase one when we, when we actually need it, correct?
Well, the point is, I don't think it's indefinite. I don't think the city said, you can have this camera for, you know, the rest of.
Yeah, as I said, do they use it?
Do you have any input on that?
Well, they will now. We've had this discussion.
No, I mean, but it's true. I mean, we, we have it now and we don't have to replace it. When they ask for it back, then we have to replace it.
Correct. But like, like Brian says, if they ask for it the day before a board meeting, it's going to take time to order the stuff and get it in, so.
Well, we will surely announce it, but it won't be on the TV livestream or anything.
Lisa?
My concern was always B. The, the, so, you know, the comments I got from the community that they wanted to see the, the meetings, so.
And we can do that. And we can do that. That would be the cost. If, if that is the desire of the board for $2,543, we can provide that.
And I thank you for getting that number.
You're welcome.
Jeff?
Is that just a one-time cost then?
Yes, it's a piece of equipment.
Several pieces of equipment.
I'd like to make a motion to approve option A and B.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question.
Yep. Chris?
So B, do you get cable, Lisa, where you live?
No.
So all the people that want to watch it on cable are not where you are?
They never have been able to.
Okay. So how would that, who is this helping then?
People in town.
But if it's live streaming, why do they need cable?
Because a lot of our elderly population do not watch off of a computer. They watch TV.
You think that's the population that's interested in having it on cable? I'm just asking.
Yeah, because it's on TV then. Exactly.
Brian, with A and B, will we be able to rebroadcast?
No. With just a one, it's live and that's it. But those people could record it themselves if they wanted to.
Well, and how was it done in the past? Was it, when it was on TV? Was it rebroadcasted or just the one time?
It was rebroadcasted by Cable Access. Cable Access was the one that rebroadcasted.
Okay.
So if you choose option A and B, nobody can go online and watch the board meetings?
No, no, we'll keep, we can do the streaming. That will continue, but we'll.
You'll continue the streaming and then you'll be able to keep, put it online?
Yes.
For people to watch later?
Yes.
Okay.
But we wouldn't.
That's what I was trying to get.
Yeah. We wouldn't have the, what, option C talks about is being able to rebroadcast it on the cable TV network.
Right. So if you wanted to go see it, you'd have to do it on a computer.
No. For C, that would give us the capability.
I'm, I'm, I'm A and B. If you did A and B.
If you wanted to see it.
Yes.
See it, not letter C, but see it. That's my fault. I apologize. I wasn't clear. I said no better as an English teacher. I apologize. If you, if the board chooses option A and B, you can livestream, watch it live, and if you had a computer, you can then go online later and watch it.
Correct.
But if you had a television and you were elderly and you didn't have a computer, you could not watch it again.
Unless you recorded it yourself.
Unless you record it yourself.
It wouldn't be on days later from our end being rebroadcasted.
Okay. Kim?
What I was just going to say, and I mean, I don't want to use the word elderly unless you're going to be talking about, you know, parents' mind. I know, I'm not saying, you didn't say it.
Don't look at me. Don't look at me.
But there's, the livestream locks up. You have to click on it. You have to go in it. Where if you have it on the, the cable, you can do your dishes. You can, you know, I've heard from people that had watched it before, it's just easier to watch it. It's not such a big delay. So I, I really think it's an option. Maybe down the road, if we want to look at rebroadcasting it, but the people that want to see it, they can go on and watch it later. So.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Question first.
Yes.
Would the camera be similar to what we have now?
Yes.
Okay. The city isn't needing it. What kind of price can we offer the city to buy that one?
Oh, very good.
Wow. Great idea.
I just said, keep it.
Twenty bucks.
People didn't think that was a good idea.
I pull my second.
She first.
Is there a warranty on that? I mean, there's no warranty or any kind of guarantee on that. If we purchased a new one, we would have a warranty on that?
How old is that one?
Dirt.
I have no idea.
Well, it's not super huge, so it can't be more than five years.
I, I believe it's fairly new. I just don't know how old it is.
And if it dies, then we, yep, then we buy one.
That's what I'm saying. I said, I think we should just use it until.
I think we should get our own camera.
Just, just the city needs it back. And if they pull it before a board meeting, shame on them.
Are you pulling your second?
I already did.
I know. Just checking. Somebody ought to contact the city and see what they want for it. I think that's a brilliant idea.
I think it's a very good idea. I think we can do B no matter what.
Yes, Jeff?
You, you can still say A and just say, he's got up to $4,063 to buy it.
Well, then amend your motion to say that.
Well, it says estimate cost to, oh, it says new video camera.
Yeah, it does.
All right. I'll amend A to say new or used and B as it is.
That I'll second.
Wait a second.
Yes.
We're going to spend $4,000 on a used piece of?
No, 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 no.
Up two. Oh, okay. So up two?
They can make the, trust them to make the, my intention is, you guys make the decision. If you want to buy it and you get a good deal on it, great. If you think it's a better option to get a new one, great.
Okay. Very good. Roll call vote, please.
So basically, we're just getting a new one. That's what I'm hearing right now. That's really what I'm hearing. I am seriously.
I understood it as.
The city will give us that camera for $2,000. We buy it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe.
Maybe they might just donate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody to vote.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Reed has asked to speak to the next thing, but hang on one second, Reed, because I have a email from our Roberts Rules queen who says.
If it's wanted to due to the time it is and what's left, somebody could make a motion to move policy to the next meeting if anybody.
Or to the policy committee.
Or to the policy committee.
We're going to be setting that up tonight.
Yeah, we have yet, that yet to do too.
The only thing is, in, in one of these policies at the.
There was a change made.
Yes.
And we did catch that after the packet went out.
Okay.
And so it will be reflected in the next production of it. It just wasn't in this one and I apologize for that.
We need to have 381.3 voted on tonight so we can get it into handbooks.
Which one?
381.3, Technology Responsible Use. We need to get that so we can get it into handbooks.
And that actually is the one that really should go to committee because I have like a million comments on that one and I wasn't able to make the date that you had made available.
When do handbooks have to be out for print?
Now.
Do we want to, is that the one you guys went over?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Ms. Evil?
We can approve it as it is and then the committee can take another look at it. I mean, is that possible?
We need, we need to get these things into the secondary handbooks and the elementary handbook so they can be printed off so that they're ready for the start of the school year. So any changes that are made would have to be reflected in next year's handbooks or an insert. But we, we need to, if, if we don't do this, then we're back to using the existing policy, which is not good because it doesn't reflect what we need to have reflected.
Yes.
So, just so I understand, we, we print these off every year and then give them to our staff?
Print what off, Jeff?
These policies.
All these policies in the handbook?
No. We're talking about handbooks for kids.
For the students.
Oh, for the students. Oh, I got you. Okay.
Just 381.
Okay.
And then we would update the employee handbook as well.
Right. Okay.
But the student's handbook has to be.
Got you.
All the stuff has to be in when?
Now.
Like today? Well, we're already late?
No, but I mean, we're talking days. I mean, we've already delayed it as much as we can with the printers.
So if we print it as is and add amendments, addendums, what's the correct word, is that an appropriate thing to do just to get the new policy in the book? This is will of the board. So.
Okay. I know that they worked on it and there's some major changes that can be put in.
Alex, Lisa, Jeff, Trish?
Yeah, I have, I sat in. We went through, Jeff and I sat in and we went through 381.3 with a fine-tooth comb, literally line by line. And I, while I had a lot of questions, I would imagine, I bet they're similar to Lisa's questions, I had an opportunity to ask them all and get answers to everyone. And I think that that policy, understanding the lateness of it, the policy is good by me as it is and understanding it needs to get in the book. I think that we should deal with 381.3 now and tonight.
Okay. Someone, I need someone.
I need a motion to.
Yep. Table?
Postpone.
No.
Postpone. Yeah, because I don't want to pull it back off the table. Postpone a second reading of 141, 142, 180, and 181 to the next board meeting.
Let's take a roll call vote on that, please.
Before you vote, what, what does Roberts Rules of Order have to do with me asking to speak about an agenda item?
It's posted. He still gets to speak.
I was just going to ask you in about a minute if you wanted to still speak based on the fact that those four were pulled, is all?
When did you pull them?
We're getting it to that. We're doing it right now.
I know, but before, but normally one in the public would speak before you'd even consider doing anything.
Right. Correct. You're right.
You're going to pull them, pull them with the not, with the, I mean, I'm just going to comment on what I see in there and you're not even allowing me to comment and you're pulling them already.
Reed, I'm not trying to.
Five minutes, but don't, don't start getting frustrated with me because I've been sitting here and you brought up Roberts Rules of Order. You're going to tell me, I don't know what you're going to tell me. I, you, the policy here is, and I've been here for, what? Three hours. And I, and I have signed up to speak, been patient here, and now I thought it was my time to speak.
In 30 seconds, I was going to ask you if you still wanted to speak. If it's important you do that, you do it before this motion. Please come to the podium and speak.
And I mean, he is correct that we always had them before we even talked about any of the items. We made them speak first. So I can see his frustration. So.
You know, it's not a matter of frustration. You know what it is? It's a matter of how, at this board, how can you have a, have a discussion about anything that, with people that aren't honest? You know, for example, I mean, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to talk on this, but we were told tonight by you reiterated what you asked for, that there was no commitment to Jackson School. And lo and behold, we have this big discussion right after.
Reed, you're not on topic. You need to speak to what you signed up to, please.
Yes. Yes. I, I believe when I, when I signed up, I was being kind because I could cover all of this in, in five minutes. Okay? I didn't need to individually. And I, and I signed up, you've had several items here under that. And it was your, your, your meetings. And what the point I'm trying to make is that if your people would do what I thought was already done, I wouldn't even have to speak about it because this is, was the policy on board officers. I, I thought it was very clear a couple of meetings ago, Lisa Totten, you brought up that how you wanted the agenda brought, you know, prepared, that it was going to be with the president and vice president. And the superintendent was going to be just advising. And it was, it was so clear because other people were telling you how you would, you would make that motion. And here, it's second reading, it's exactly like it used to be. That's the point I'm trying to make. You don't, what are you pulling? If you're going to pull it, pull it with the, with the recommendation that it come back with the way that it was passed. I come to all the meetings. I know what has been done. You know, it wouldn't be like, if I hadn't been here, I could, you could fool me, but you're not going to fool me. And how can they fool you? Why aren't you making?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Just, can I interrupt?
I don't think so.
Okay.
This is Reed's five minutes. Go ahead.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't know what, I, I can't, you know, I come here and I have difficulty, there must be two, there's so much going on here behind the scenes by, I can't follow this, this stuff. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
This is what, what, what you, what you did here and it's not here. And now you're pulling it for what? Are you going to make the changes? Wouldn't you talk about that?
Yes.
Don't you agree with me? It's that simple.
Are you done? So then I can respond?
Well, yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Amy, that is the change that we were.
It is.
The, the motion was made, Reed, for changing of the words. It was approved and it didn't get in the packet like Amy just said. So it will be changed before it comes back again.
But it'd be nice if Amy, if you would say what exactly was going to be changed. I mean, you talk about this, I don't know. I can't hear your little sidebar.
Okay. So what it's going to say, Reed, is number nine in policy 141 is going to read that the agenda is prepared by the president and vice president with recommendations submitted by the superintendent.
Right. And if that would have been done, I wouldn't even have had to have signed up at all.
You're correct. Yes.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We did.
Okay. Can we do a roll call vote, please? This is to poll policies or to, not table.
Postpone.
Postpone policies 142, 180, 181, and we're missing one?
141, 142.
141. But not 183. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. I need a, a motion concerning policy 140.
381.
381 point, why am I not finding this? Here we go. 381.3, Technology Responsible Use.
As we were at the meeting, I guess I'll make the motion to accept it as presented.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I was just going to ask, you know, I know there was three people on there and at Lisa said she couldn't make it, so you two made it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Give me a second. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Evil?
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Print away.
Okay. We are now on G general. Reed, you asked to speak to this.
Yeah. I really want to speak about the G three. Okay. So you can, you know, let me find stuff. If you talk about, you can talk about the article and I'll talk when you, for that one.
Sounds good to me. Okay. The first is the approval of future agenda items. I have written down exit interviews. I did not hear anything else specific mentioned in this meeting. Does anyone else have? Lisa?
Well, I thought, well, I know, I was told that the staff morale plan was going to be at this meeting and it wasn't on the agenda. So we still have a huge staff morale issue. So not sure how that didn't happen. Also, the contracted custodial services contract was supposed to be at this meeting.
With recommendations.
Yes. And the budget workshop is, was no longer listed under the potential workshops. I'm not sure what happened there. So that needs to be put back on. And I would also like to add the instructional leader positions, but if that's going to be at committee level, then that's fine. But I think that whole thing needs to be looked at. And the SPAS athletics. Did you get all that?
I did.
Can I comment just on a couple of items? The budget is under B2E, I'm sorry, 10 B2E Educational Financial Priorities. That's where that is, the budget is.
Okay. And I didn't, priorities and a budget are two different things to me. So.
Well, we, the, the whole idea of this one is, is once the Consolidated Task Force comes forward, the administration's going to present the, the financial, the educational financial priorities that the board is going to have to decide upon, which includes the budget.
Could you clarify that, Amy? Put budget on the end of that then so that.
On the end of which one?
11 B2E.
And the.
Thank you, Amy.
There, there was another one that you mentioned. Oh, the, the contracted contractual, I indicated in my superintendent's report that we're going to bring that back January 23rd, excuse me, June the 23rd. And at the last meeting, I indicated the same thing, that we were not ready to bring that forward, but on June 23rd, we would be.
I have it in my notes on the ninth. So.
And we just kept it on the, we kept it, we knew you wanted it on the agenda just to get an update that it wasn't ready. That was, been the request in the past. That's why we had it handled the way it was handled.
Okay. And when it's part of a superintendent's report, to me, that's really not part, but that's fine.
Well, just so it's something that's handled better in the future, what would you like? You would still like it as a line item? My concern then is that people will address it, but we're not even going to talk about it. That's why, you know what I mean? If people see it on the agenda, they'll think it's time to address it, but then we're not even going to talk about it. So they'll be frustrated.
But listing it here, they could, they could sign up to talk about it anyhow if they wanted to.
That's true.
Right.
I'm just saying for me, it's clear if it's in the place where.
Even if all we're going to say is it's not ready?
Correct.
But they could sign up and talk about it as part of the superintendent's report.
Right. That's what she just said.
Or public comment.
Right.
Correct.
It makes no difference to me. I would like to do it in a way that's clarifying for people and not frustrating. So if you want it as line item?
I would prefer that. Thank you.
I don't think it should be a line item. If we're not going to discuss it, if someone wants to make a comment, fine. But if we don't have information, it shouldn't be put out there as something that's, we're going to discuss.
The problem with that, Chris, and I totally get that, the problem is then it gets lost. You know, every, every board packet I get, I pull out my old board packet and I have to go through. And it just makes it much simpler if it's here.
So what is the wish of the board? Where do you want it? If you have a, if we have an agenda item that was going to be done by a date, but it's not ready, and we just All right, I'm getting there. All right. Jeff, I think this ultimately was your initial request. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, just want to get it out and get going.
Okay. Is this action we need to give you?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to authorize us to issue the RFP for legal services.
Okay. Lisa?
On page one in 3.1, Background Information, can you explain to me why we have listed the university, what's also located within the boundary of the district? What relevance that has to do with the RFP?
Yeah, it gives law firms an opportunity to see what kind of district we have, and it gives a sense of the community. It's done typically. We looked at probably eight different RFPs for legal services, and they all provided a brief background of the district or information.
And I can understand that in old school, like, that's the way it's been done forever, but with, you know, the internet, the way it is, I mean, they'll pull up Stevens Point, and they'll do their own research, so...
There's no harm in doing this, particularly listing some of the major employers in town.
I just, like I said, I just don't see a purpose in that. The other thing is, I would like to see with the timeframe, something in there about a 30-day cancellation, something like we have with the Clean Power, just so that if, for some reason, we decide we want to cancel our contract, that we can do that. I'm not sure if that's feasible or not, but if we've done it in other contracts, I think that would be nice for us to have that flexibility.
I believe that's in here.
Is it? Then I missed it.
Yeah, let me just, let me just look for it. I believe that we did.
Okay. Then I just assumed it would be by the timeframe, so I apologize for missing that.
90 days.
90 days. Okay, thank you.
And where did you find that?
It's under 8.3.4.
Oh, there we go. Okay, perfect, thank you. And the other thing is, I, and maybe I missed this, too. I was under the impression that part of the issue with our current legal is that the billings are not detailed. And if we want that to be part of this contract, to ensure that that's the way they are sent to the Board, do we want that in there? Or is that already in here, and I just missed it?
The billings are detailed.
Um...
They're very detailed. In fact, as an open records request, we have to redact some names of individuals. They're that detail.
But they're very grouped there, you know, it's like a, almost like a little paragraph. Okay, I did this, 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 two hours, whatever.
That's not universally true, Lisa. If you look at the detailed monthly billing, there are times when there is one item...
Oh, there, right. But I'm just saying, is that what we want for, I mean, because it was an issue in the past.
Well, what, I don't know that it was a Board issue. There were several members of the Board who raised that issue, but I don't know that it was a Board issue. As far as we're concerned, the detailing, when we look at that to approve it administratively, there are seven people that, that billing goes around to sign off on. And when there are multiple things occurring, every cabinet member has to sign off on what their individual item was. So if the Board would like me to put in here some kind of a phrasing about detailing, and you want, you want, what wording you want, have at it. I would be glad to insert it. So just tell me what you want. I'd be glad to do it.
I think it's also something we could address with someone once we've made our decision. I don't, I don't know that it needs to be part of the RFP.
I'm just going to make the motion to authorize the, my gosh, way too late. Yes, of the RFP for the legal services, for the above and the attached.
I will second that. Issuance.
Thank you. And I just came to you as you said it, issuance.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Paxton.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Reed, you're up.
This, we got a memo here, it says here, per Board Policy 133, and advice from legal counsel, Mike Jilkow, we need to begin the process of finding a replacement for Renee, and recommendation, follow policy, and begin the process of finding a new member immediately, so we can have, hear from candidates, have a new member sworn in by June 23rd. Boy, there's a fast one. First of all, Board, your Board policy, Renee's in her last, was in her last year. And even your policy, which is somewhat consistent with the state statute, it's pretty simple, the state statute, that you really have to follow. You know, when a vacancy occurs in an office department, who is in the last year of his or her term? The successor shall be elected at the next spring election. Okay? What's so difficult about that? She resigned after the spring election. She's in her last term. We're having an election process starting in about two months, okay? No law says you have to have nine members. Doesn't it have, tell you have to have eight? You could have seven. You could have five if you wanted, okay? So you've been operating for already, what, so why don't you, that's your policy, okay? That is your policy. So why, you know, and then, let's say, for some reason, you want to overrule your policy, and then I can, I can assure you that there are probably be some people that would want to appoint someone. Well, why would you, why would seven, eight of you people think you're more adept, or more, it's better, or, would be the word, that you should pick the next school board member when we just had an election? You would then think you would choose the person who took the next highest votes, because we have one member on here, that, you choose three members. Who got elected with the fourth highest? So go to the fifth highest voter. Not picking somebody off the street. I've been through, I've been coming to these board meetings a long time, and it's a farce when you go through the appointment process. Remember the one, you had a SPAS, when you had, you had all these people coming, making their speeches, and then you ended up picking, what the heck was her name?
Genzak.
Genzak.
Genzak again. You know, and then the last time, we had to go through the same thing, and pick Jeff Presley. So you're picking a Board member anyways. You know, or somebody, you know, no, follow the policy. And, and, and the state policy is how you come up with, with this part of this policy, but you don't have the whole policy of the state policy written, and that's pretty simple. So, shoot, wait till the next election. That seems to be clear. But, but, because I have a strong suspicion what's going to happen here. If you go through this appointment process, there are going to be people here, they're going to be, hopefully, you know, what some people think here, there are going to be five of you who think you can, or four of you, there's going to have to be five, because you'll be going four-four, or something, we're going to get somebody else that thinks like you. And that's all this Board's ever been about. It's not what's, you know, any honorable process here, is who's going to get the most votes to get somebody else that thinks like them. And that's not how they should, should, should be. We had an election, if you have to appoint somebody in your rules, but I, I think it's pretty clear, and we got a lawyer here, and I think you can read it. And I managed to give the state statute, pretty simple, it's 1726 to you, Lisa, you could hand it over to the attorney there. She could read it. I think it's pretty simple, what the state statute tells you. And to me, when a vacancy occurs in the office, the Board member who's in the last year of his or her term, bingo, then the successor shall be elected at the next spring election. What's, what am I missing here, Attorney?
I don't represent this Board.
Well, you don't, but you're a school board member. So somebody here, tell me if I'm missing something here. Why does even, has even come up? Okay? And that's, that's the big question here. So you, it appears to me you'd, you'd run, because I don't want to see this appointment process going, going forward, and then we're going to get into the same old stuff, four-four, or something like that, it's going to be locked in, everybody's going to be trying to vote one of their pals in that thinks like them. You know, when, if that's the process, then you would automatically go to this, and I brought it here for Christine Scott, who will probably be the one who wants to appoint somebody. And here's, here was the vote. You didn't win that much more than, than Hetzel, who had 1,500, you only had 1,900. The ones who really blew this game out were Kokonoski and Trish Baker, who beat you all by 1,500 votes. So, so to think that somebody like the fourth highest person, Fifth Hetzel, wouldn't be the one you would appoint...
Okay.
Would have a tough argument.
Thank you.
Follow the state statutes and run with it.
Okay. We have been advised by our legal counsel to get on with this process as quickly as possible. He said it is actually not an option to leave the place, the position vacant for the year. I don't know why, I didn't ask specific questions, we can...
It is an option.
Yeah, it is.
It's a statute that got...
Okay. I'm going to go to, with the attorney who's contacted us a couple of times, who said it isn't.
I just clarify, I was never a part of that conversation.
I sent you the same email he sent me.
Right. But, I mean, I never had the conversation.
Nor did I. He said, this isn't an option, I'll send you your policy, you need to get on this. That said, if everybody, we can do a majority vote if you want, we can have legal counsel contact us and let us know. I am doing what I believe is the responsible thing, and that's, let's get on with getting a Board member appointed. Is that the wish of this Board?
Do we need to make a motion on this recommendation if we want to move ahead with Policy 133 and begin the process?
We do.
Well, then I'm going to make that motion for discussion, to follow the Policy 133 and begin the process of finding a new Board member immediately, so we can hear from candidates in order to have our new member sworn in and seated at the June 23rd, 2014 Board Meeting. That's my motion.
I don't believe that's necessary, because we just had an election.
But before discussion, we would need a second, because if there's not a second, it's not even up for discussion.
I didn't hear a second.
I didn't.
Wait for it. That's why she's saying...
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you.
That's why I was looking at you, because I figured...
We were hoping.
Okay, so, Alex.
Alex, before you make the comment. Am I not correct, and maybe I'm not, Amy, the person who makes the motion in Robert's rules is allowed to make the first comment?
If that's what the Board wants to go with, yeah.
Okay, if not, go ahead, Alex.
We've never done that before, but, go ahead.
I just look at it as the dedication, that, I'm going to just speak for myself, I won't speak for anyone else who ran. I looked at this, I came to meetings, I spent a lot of time researching, I went out there, I did the legwork. Dedication. I know that other Board members, and as well as other candidates that did not get elected, did the dedication. They've been coming to the majority of the meetings as well, still following up, still trying to be in the process. It would just be foolish that we just had an election to not go with what the community already decided they want. If someone else is interested to be in this Board, they should have been in that election. Not just coming out at the last minute because they're being swayed in one way or another by unforeseeable, unknown forces at this point in time.
So you're saying, you're saying to go with the person who got the next highest votes?
If we were, if we were going to go with that process, but I still believe that we are able to operate with eight.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate, because that's the same thing, I mean, when you said, talked about the legal counsel, did he see our policy? So our policy is invalid, illegal, enforceable? Take a pick at the words. You know, that's what I'm saying. If we got the policy, we had this all looked at, I thought, by lawyers when we did the policies. So I beg to differ, but I, I'm not swayed either way. I can see leaving it as is, and I can see with your point, too. I mean, it's not easy to go out there and put yourself in front of everybody and be a candidate and do that, and then you come to the dog and pony show of appointment, and...
And they were asked the questions at the forums, and they got a chance to respond. Anyone else coming from that? Are we going to ask them all those questions? I don't think...
It's going to be a long tedious process. I agree. Okay. Chris, you have a comment?
So, yeah, I do. I think we're a nine-member Board. I know that there have been times when people have moved, or died, or whatever, and only had a year or two left, and we had to appoint someone on the Board. I think people have been very aware of what's going on in the Board, and what's going on in our district. I think that for some people, it's very, very difficult to put themselves in the position of running for election. It's difficult for me, and I've done it a number of times. It's very, very difficult. However, if someone is very interested, and has been watching, and has been listening, and has been involved, maybe not at the level we are, we don't know that. There were other people, when Jeff got back on, who came forward. This is the time that they would have to, to be involved, and to decide, is that something that they want to continue to do? And I think if there, if we have questions for them, and they can answer them, and they can tell us why they want to be on the Board, and what their interest is, and what they think they can bring to the Board, why wouldn't we give people a chance to do that? Because it isn't easy, and some people just won't do it because they don't want to run. And it gives them an opportunity, for people who would like to get involved, and would like to be on the Board, but this would be a stepping stone for them to say, I would like to do this.
If we got the policy, we had this all looked at, I thought, by lawyers when we did the policies. So I'm, I beg to differ, but I, I'm not swayed either way. I can see leaving it as is and I can see with your point too. I mean, it's not easy to go out there and put yourself in front of everybody and-
Sure.
-be a candidate and do that, and then you come to the dog and pony show of appointment and-
And they were asked the questions at the forums and they got a chance to respond. Anyone else coming from that? Are we going to ask them all those questions? I don't think-
It's going to be a long tedious process. I agree. Okay. Chris, you have a comment?
So, yeah, I do. I think we're a nine-member board. I know that there have been times when people have moved or died or whatever and only had a year or two left and we had to appoint someone on the board. I think people have been very aware of what's going on in the board and what's going on in our district. I think that for some people, it's very, very difficult to put themselves in the position of running for election. It's difficult for me and I've done it a number of times. It's very, very difficult. However, if someone is very interested and has been watching and has been listening and has been involved, maybe not at the level we are, we don't know that. There were other people when Jeff got back on who came forward. This is the time that they would have to, to be involved and to decide, is that something that they want to continue to do? And I think if there, if we have questions for them and they can answer them and they can tell us why they want to be on the board and what their interest is and what they think they can bring to the board, why wouldn't we give people a chance to do that? Because it isn't easy and some people just won't do it because they don't want to run. And it gives them an opportunity for people who would like to get involved and would like to be on the board, but this would be a stepping stone for them to say, "I would like to do this." So I'd like to give somebody the opportunity to do it. We don't have to choose anyone if we don't want to, but at least it gives people who maybe ran before and didn't get in, gives them a second opportunity. And we're a nine-member board.
Can, Trish? Can I ask, can you repeat your motion? What, what was your motion?
It's, it's on the recommendation there.
It's just-
It's just to follow our Policy 133.
Okay, so to hear from candidates.
Right.
Okay, all right. Can I make a statement?
Yeah.
I would not be here but for the vacancy that occurred back a year, a little more than a year, year and a couple of months ago. I, actually, somebody asked me if I would be interested and I said, "Oh, sure, what the heck? Why not?" I came at it with a somewhat, I had been to many meetings and I was, kind of came at it with not, not as much dedication as an election. And when I walked out of here, five different people came up to me and said, "You should consider running," which is why I considered running. So I agree with what Chris is saying is that it sort of opens the door for someone who may have an interest but doesn't, didn't have the, the interest in running an election. And, and I have to say, that was the situation for me as it did give me the confidence. Of course, Jeff beat me, but, it was such a good experience just to come and speak before the board and answer your questions and so forth.
Jeff?
And kind of to Reed's point, and some people said, "Well, why not pick the next I was always the next vote getter. And the last time that this board appointed somebody, they didn't follow that practice of picking the next person. I guess the second time around they did because I was the next vote getter. But it's not been the practice of this board, it's kind of been whatever works. And I, I mean, I can go either way. If we don't fill it, we don't fill it, or if you want to put it out there, that's fine.
You're missing something. Your own policy is similar to the state's.
Nope, please don't comment. Reed, your time's done.
Read your policy.
Reed, stop.
Attila.
I'm just telling you- I just want to, I just want-
It's not your policy. Your policy says-
Reed, please stop.
Reed, stop.
God, people, don't you read?
I just want to advise the board that, that I don't know what Mike Jilkas reasoning would be to say that, that we had to fill it. I trust Mike as much as I trust any attorney in the state. And I have looked at the state, the state statutes. But aside from that, the board has been more prescriptive than the statute. You don't have an option. Otherwise, you're going to violate your own policy. There are two parts to this policy. One of them says, "A vacancy shall be filled by appointment." It does not say "may," it says "shall." So you do have to fill this vacancy by appointment. You can't automatically pick the next vote getter and you don't have the option of leaving it vacant.
We're just reading that damn paragraph.
Reed, one more and I'll have you removed.
It also says "may." I'll leave on my own.
Okay, bye.
You claim you're an English major? Read the whole damn thing. It also says "may."
Reed, stop.
In that same paragraph.
Reed.
You are, boy, you twisted-
Stop.
Boy, I'm talking about people.
So the next sentence indicates how it's to be done, but the very first sentence is very clear. The second part of this has to do with what happens after you appoint it, that is, the election. So paragraphs one, two, three, four, and five indicates when the election is to occur depending on when the vacancy occurs. But the first paragraph says the appointment shall be filled, that the vacancy shall be filled. So my, my advice to you is that you follow your policy, which is very clear.
Um, go ahead, Lisa.
I just wanted the board to be aware that we have suspended policy in the past and that is an option. We can always suspend this policy and not hire, not fill the position. So as much as the superintendent says we have to file, we have to hire someone, or not hire someone, but appoint someone, that's not true. We can always suspend our policy. We've done it in the past.
Of course. But if you follow the policy, this is the policy to follow.
Okay, discussion's over unless someone has something new to add. Let's decide if we're going to do this or not.
We have a motion in a second.
Could you read the motion again?
It's what's on here.
That's right.
You read it off.
I just read it off.
The motion is to follow Policy 133, begin the process of finding a new board member immediately so we can hear from candidates in order to have our new members sworn in and seated at the June 23rd, 2014 Board Meeting. Yes.
So are we doing this, having all the candidates come in for the June 23rd, just like we did last time, and then they step in?
Yes.
We would publish it in the newspaper, Kim, as we have in the past. We'd follow that process.
I mean, we want to have a special meeting or anything like that? It would be done all on the 23rd?
Unless people ask otherwise, I was thinking the 23rd, yes.
Um, may I ask a question?
Yep.
That doesn't seem like much time. That's two weeks from today, correct?
Right.
But we would post it tomorrow and candidates would have 10 days in which to submit their names, which is pretty typical. I went back and looked.
Okay.
So it, yeah, we would publish it online. City Times would publish it immediately. The Journal would do it, I think, a day or two later and then the Gazette would do it on Friday.
One question still. I read what it says about filling board vacancy, that there's a policy on that, but there's no policy on saying that it has to be filled. I don't see that anywhere.
Yeah, it says, it says, "When a vacancy occurs..."
Where does it-
Second paragraph.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
It says, "A vacancy shall be filled by appointment."
But the one before-
Well, I understand it says, "When a vacancy occurs, qualified electors may contact the school board to express interest." But the third paragraph is very clear, "Vacancy shall be filled." It doesn't say a vacancy may be filled.
But this, this whole-
It's a matter of interpretation, perhaps?
This whole policy is titled, "Filling Board Vacancies." You're first deciding to fill the board vacancy, right?
Right.
Okay. So that's what the vote is?
Correct.
And if we vote against it, we're going against legal counsel, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That was only told to you.
A secret meeting, yes.
Okay.
Holy, okay. So-
And, and he's aware, he was aware of the statute because-
He sent it to me.
-statute supersedes anything we do.
He mailed it to me.
Besides federal.
No, actually, it's not true, Alex. You have to be very careful here.
The board can supersede the state.
The school board policy can be more specific than that so long as it follows that. And the policy does, but the policy clearly states, "A vacancy shall be filled by appointment."
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just telling you. So it's not just the conversation that Angel had with Mike, but-
Okay.
We'll call vote, please.
Can I ask?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Just a second. If we vote yes, we're voting for it to be filled on the 23rd following this policy. If we vote no, we're saying-
Something else.
Then we'll have to come up with the next option.
Okay. Well, just don't call me first.
Ms. Baker.
You can call me. Leave the board alone. You can have to wait because they have done that before too.
All right. You can pass. Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
No.
Mr. Presley.
No.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
No.
Ms. Totten.
No.
Ms. Baker.
No.
Motion has failed.
All right. Then what would you like to do is what we need to then address.
Spring election.
I would suggest you get legal counsel. I would suggest you get legal counsel before you do anything.
Or should we just appoint the next person who was on the ballot right away?
That's an option too.
Yes?
You didn't speak to him, you just got an email from him, correct?
The context was that I said, "Oh, I don't know." He was looking at the papers for some reason. I said, "Did you see that Renee resigned?" And he said, "No." So we need to talk about filling that spot. And I said, "No." I said, "I think, we'll just wait." I understand we don't have to fill it this year. He goes, "Oh, absolutely not. You don't have that option. I will forward this to you. You need to get on that right now."
But what was he basing that on, you know?
I don't know, but I'd be happy to call him at the June 16th meeting and we can ask him ourselves.
Yep.
That's the plan I would like to follow. Just buy ourselves one more week.
Well, then you can't really post it, can, if we follow 133.
That already failed.
We already have people out in the community, like the police chief, who want to fill the position. Has put it out there already.
Has he resigned as police chief?
No.
Okay. So I was trying, I was trying to wrap in my mind how he has the time for that.
He was applying for, he wants to be on this position.
There are people who are waiting for the board to do this because the board has always filled the position. We're a nine-member board and that community is waiting for us to fill the position.
And they can wait another week.
Yep. Well, we'll, I'll make sure Mike's available to be on the phone on the 16th. If, which we have not approved yet. If the board approves, meeting on the 16th.
All right. Well, that's-
I will ask this. If he's not available, is a written explanation an acceptable thing for people?
Good for me.
I, I have another question. Would a motion to allow people to apply for the board position not necessarily to start on the 23rd be something anyone would consider?
No.
Nope?
Okay. Okay, so the writ, the written question I had. If Mike's not available, can you write something that explains this? I have two yeses.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I was just going to make a comment too, that I believe like what Chris said, there's, there's people out there waiting for the appointment. I mean, you know, regardless if they had the last vote or the next most, there's people that have been contacting me, "What are you guys going to do?" I said, "No." We could set it, it could set empty for, you know, depending on her, her policy reads. So I think we need to get that clarification since it was brought up in the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. I'll see if I can have him on the phone on Monday. If we have a meeting on Monday.
If it's cheaper to get a writing, then-
I'm just fine with something in writing from him.
Sounds good. If, if I get it in writing, Amy, can I email it? Like if Mike puts it in writing and sends it to you, can you email it to the board?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So if he can-
And then if we have more questions as a board member than we can ask.
Amy, yeah. Do it through Amy.
Yeah, because you can't respond to every email.
Yep.
We're good.
Okay, we are now on board and committee meeting organization and scheduling, regular board meeting dates. Okay, Amy provided everybody with this. And I thought the easiest thing for us to do right now is let's go right through it and talk about exactly when the dates are going to be. The reason that this is even on here, when we talked about the timing already, is that we had moved the regular board meeting to the fourth Monday to give cabinet time from committee meetings to turn around information, but they said they had that, the one week was plenty of time and they would prefer that it's the week right after committee meetings because it's fresh in everybody's mind, the discussion is fresh and it makes more sense to them. So they assured Attila and they assured me that they can have the information ready in a week. So that is why it is back on the table, but when I look at it and I circled all the seconds, it makes more sense because we don't hit holidays, where if we do it the fourths, we're hitting holidays. So per this, just real quicky, I will tell you what the meetings would be. A regularly scheduled board meeting.
Let me get the typing module on.
Well, this is just FYI. So it'd be July 14th, August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, November triangle, kidding, 10th, December 8th, January 12th, February 9th, March 9th, April 13th. And then the new sitting board would choose from that point on.
Maybe.
Right. In a perfect world. The committees would just be the Monday right before that. I think we need to do this as action, right, Amy, since we're changing of prior actions? If we do it this way, is that correct?
So-
Or do we need a consensus?
Just so I'm right, the dates you just read off are for the second meeting and then they would still have the fourth meeting of the, or on the fourth Monday.
The fourth would still be either a workshop or a meeting.
And the second is a regular meeting and the week before that is the committees.
All right.
We can do it as just a general consent if nobody's against it.
Angel, the committee meeting. I got it.
They'll work.
Except for September.
I say we make it the third. No.
I was just saying, could you kick up? Yes, can I throw something in?
It wouldn't work for September.
So September, the first Monday in September, which would be the regularly scheduled committee meeting, is a holiday. It is Labor Day?
Yeah.
So-
But there's also five Mondays that month.
Look at that. Thank you. Man, is she good or what?
But does that kill, does that eliminate you for the third Monday?
Um, no, that's fine.
Okay.
That would be fine.
So in September, committees would be on the 8th and the regularly scheduled board meeting would be on the 15th. The optional meeting would be the 29th.
Perfect. So do you need a motion to accept the dates that you've just outlined?
If, if we all agree, we can just do it by consensus, so.
We're just doing the regular board meetings right now.
Well, no, and then committee meetings would be the first Monday.
First Monday, then- Not the times right now, just the dates.
Correct.
Not the rotation schedule, just the dates.
Correctamundo.
Do you want to make that clear?
Does anybody have any objection to the dates?
No.
No.
Awesome. Okay. I'm going to assume you have an issue with the rotation schedule.
Well, two things. The, the five o'clock, for some people that work until six or work until five o'clock out of the city could cause a problem. Okay? The rotation of it, I think, I understand the concept of it. I think it could be confusing if the public wants to come and listen to a certain committee. Committee.
Even if it were published, Kim, in advance, that the rotation would be obvious? I mean, people go online all the time to look at when and where meetings are. I understand if they're, if they've gotten used to a practice, but if it was clear that this was rotational and we published it correctly every, every time? I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, okay, I might just be confusing myself. If I have a rotating schedule at work and I'm trying to, you know, again, I don't know if I'm going to be a chair on something, but I'd hate to say you can never have my meeting at five o'clock because I can't be here.
Okay, so I'll just wrote this down quick. So if we switched it to six, but we stuck with the 75 minutes, it would be six to 7:15, 7:15 to 8:30, 8:30 to 9:45. So the last meeting would be ending almost at 10 o'clock.
I can't come until 6:30, a little bit before that. But I don't have to be on whatever specific committee if it is not rotating.
But if we're rotating, right. Um, well, what do you guys want to do? We're just trying to be fair and decent to everyone, so what's the best way to do this?
If they rotate, that means that you would only miss every third if you can't ever be there until six, after six. Do you know what I'm saying? So you wouldn't miss all of them, you would only miss only every third one.
For the first half hour of it?
Yeah.
Well, practically the whole thing.
And it depends on how we set up the committees.
75 minutes.
If he's just, if we continue the way it is now, certain board members are on certain committees.
Right.
So, then.
My first two years, I went to every committee.
So what do we want to do?
I can be brought up to speed. It's not a huge deal. I just won't chair anything.
I, I like the rotation. I think that's really fair to everybody. And I think the 75-minute limit is great. So I, but starting at six, no? Too late?
It's not the starting at six, it's the ending at 10.
Yeah. And there's a lot of heavy discussion at the committee.
That's why I suggested every Monday. That's me.
Why don't we try the rotation and see, you know? See how it goes.
We can try it and see if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
What do you guys think of that?
Why don't we try the rotation and see, you know?
Always changing.
We can try it and see if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
What do you guys think of that? Try it at five, or try it at five or try it at six? What do you want to...
Or could we do 5:30, meet in the middle, at least in the beginning?
Let's do that.
I like to compromise a little.
Okay.
5:30.
5:30 to 6:45.
5:30.
Okay, so starting at 5:30 and we'll try the rotation. If it's not working, we'll say so pretty quick.
Can you give those times, 5:30 to 6:45?
See, you're really messing with my mojo here. Okay, 6:45 to 8, yep, and 8 to 9:15. Thanks, Jeff. Alright, so let me, sorry, for the public, I was mumbling. 5:30 to 6:45, 6:45 to 8, 8 to 9:15. We'll rotate which one starts first and it will always be published. If the rotation is not working out, we will discuss that and change it. Okay. Now we need to decide...
How will you decide who, what goes first? You wanted to pick out of the hat?
Alphabetically.
There we go.
So now what we need to do, by the committee stakeholder composition representation. So our policy says that we have three additional people, two being community members, up to two being community members, one being a high school student. And we just need to decide that, yes, that's what we want to do. We need to decide on, we'll take nominations, I assume, for, or volunteers to head committees and decide how that's going to happen. And that's where we need to go. Oh, and we also need to decide which month we're going to start them. Do we want to start in June? Do we want to start in July? Well, June's all done, sorry. Do we want to start in July? Do we want to start in August? So that's, that's kind of where we're going right now and I assume we can do this all by consensus if we...
If everyone can get along and agree, do it.
Yes, Kim?
Well, I would think realistically, we can't do it in July. I don't think we'll have our committee, our, our community members and all that stuff ready for it. I would like to, I would also like to add, I would love to see a staff member on each of these committees, one or two staff members. On here.
Alright, so there. Human Resources Policy and Legislation. And that one we already had is board members only.
Is which one?
Per our policy, Human Resources Policy and Legislation. So it would be adding, by Kim's recommendation, the Business Services, Educational Services. So that's like Finance and Curriculum Student Achievement, would be adding community, a community member, a staff member and a student, or two community members?
Two.
So two community members, a staff member and a student to Business and Educational. What do we think of that?
What does policy say?
Different policies.
Be the policy.
I, I just, I really think we had a great makeup with having two community members and a sta, and a, a student. I don't think you should have a staff member on HR. Our policy says you don't have a staff member on HR.
They're not on HR.
There is, no, HR is just board members.
We already agreed on HR, we can't, so...
And I, I'm not sure, I mean, the board committees are an arm of the board. We're bringing community members in. We're the governing board and you have governing, you have people who have elected us. I'm not sure a staff member belongs on a committee. On an ad hoc committee? The super task force or the consolidated task force? Absolutely.
Does a county allow community members on their committees?
What's that?
Does a county allow community members on their committees?
Not on their standing, their standing committees.
On their commissions.
You're talking committees.
There's a diff, there's, there's a difference. The Parks Commission, Solid Waste Commission, they have community members on there. Some of their other standing, like the library board, some, some of the others. So it's, it depends, yes and no.
And the only reason I'm saying is because if, if you follow what Chris just said, then if we're an elected body, this is arm of the board, blah, 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 then we shouldn't have community members on there either.
We can't really use the word elected if we're going to be appointing people to anymore.
The policy says up to three voting non-school board citizens. And then it also says, and up to one high school student representative except for HR, which is comprised only of school board members. So if you want to add staff, you'd have to alter the policy.
It's easy.
To the board.
Or can they be one of the community members and we can just let staff know that they can apply, but we don't have to specifically, because maybe they're not interested.
They're just a community member.
That's a little disingenuous to the public. If you're going to have a staff member...
I would like them to be an, yeah.
My concern, okay, so say it's a finance committee or if they're in a voting position, are they going to be put in a situation where they're voting on their own, their own situation?
They'd have to recuse themselves.
Well, they wouldn't have to because they're not in an elected position.
There's another option.
And they don't have any authority. It's not till it goes through the full board. The committee has no authority.
You've given them authority. You've given the committees...
Given them the authority, make a recommendation to the board, but they, they don't get a final vote.
Well, I would think you should check with legal counsel about conflict of interest before you do anything.
Um, here's another idea, just an idea.
Yep.
I'm sure nobody will like it, but I'm going to put it out there anyway.
Put it up there, bring it.
Um, since we had some issues with committees before and getting the information from the committee to the board, what if we only had board members on the committees initially?
Then we might also just have another meeting so we can get it done with that night. That would be my thought. Then why have, you know...
I think that's what I just said.
I mean, kind of, kind of like an ad hoc committee of the board. Just throwing it out there.
Okay, it's held, you saw it pulled up, sorry, I...
Yeah.
Could you read it, the wording to us one more time, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, this is policy 185.
So it says, "Standing committees may be appointed by the school board president for any purpose approved by the school board. However, when appointing board members to standing committees, the school board president must adhere to the following guidelines. All board members should be given the opportunity to serve on all committees at least one time during their three-year terms on the school board, provided there is no conflict of interest. Standing committees of the school board shall consist of no more than four school board members, one of whom shall be designated to serve as chairperson, and up to three voting non-school board citizen members, including up to one high school student representative except for the Human Resources Committee, which is comprised of only school board members. Three board members are needed for a quorum of a committee. The school board president shall serve as an ex officio, non-voting member," etc. It goes into what happens there.
Okay, so the three is including a student, so we would have to change the policy to...
Can I add one other thing here to answer Lisa's comment? "The functions of all committees shall be fact-finding, deliberating, taking action upon items within the scope of the committee's responsibilities and making appropriate recommendations to the school board. But I would, I would advise the board to check with legal counsel if you have a staff member on a committee, either Educational Services or Finance, which may directly affect their working condition, but that may be a conflict of interest which should be addressed."
Yep, can I change my, uh, what I want, recommendation is that we ask the staff, a couple of the staff to be on the Curriculum and Student Achievement Committee? That's where they would probably be the most helpful. Can we just change that committee?
I think it's a good idea, but I am one person...
I mean, I understand the human resource and in a way I understand the finance because they have to, would be recusing themselves back and forth.
I still want to run the conflict of interest question pass. Mike, we can do that on Monday night if we want.
Can I add to Kim's suggestion, which I think is actually a really good suggestion for this reason? You would, in my recommendation to you would be that you'd have three staff members, one representing elementary, and this is talking about teachers. One representing elementary, one junior high and one high school. And there should be then a process for selecting those individuals. And if, if the board were uncomfortable with three, you could make them advisory members that sit on the committee, participate in the discussion, but don't have to vote.
Can I ask, what do we need to do tonight?
We need to elect heads of the committees.
It can be postponed. I don't have to do it tonight, but...
Yeah, I, I'm going to make a suggestion, which I don't know, might be good, might be bad. I'm getting tired and I, but I'm thinking, I like 185 the way it's written, but I see an opportunity for improvement by inviting staff members, like Kim has suggested, for some of them. But I'm thinking for now, we go with 185 and after the first meeting or at the first meeting, talk about the way to change it. Each committee meeting, discuss at that point how to change it if we want to add, if we want to change this policy. But I think the way 185 is written is pretty good if we need something to work off of tonight.
I would agree.
Plus also, it's summertime. We might not be able to reach the staff. And then in August, when we get situated, I can see that and then see if we can open it up to when this, you know, when they start back. I can see that then.
Plus the head of that committee can contact people. Then it's their deal. Okay, so would we like to find heads of committees tonight or do we want to put that off? We are planning to meeting till August, I guess it's not a... How do you want to do this? Do you want to, people express interest? Do you want to nominate people? Do we want to just kind of choose? What, how do we want to do this? Because that can decide what, if we're going to do it tonight or later, anyway.
I think it would be nice for people to express interest if they want to or not. And then whoever's expressed interest, we can discuss it then.
Well, doesn't our policy say we have to vote on...
We have to vote on who it will be, but the process getting there is certainly our choice. So if people just want to express interest, that's fine. You can express interest to Amy if you're interested in heading any of the committees. And we can vote it on, on it at the next meeting if we want to do it that way.
I like that plan.
I do too. I think that's good.
So get that to her by June 23rd.
22nd, please.
That's a Sunday.
Yeah, well, I don't...
5:30, 5:30 on the 23rd? 5:30, why not 6:29?
Yeah.
Because you can't be driving and texting at the same time.
How do you think I work to a full-time job?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
Your choice, sweetie.
Okay, so if you are interested in being the head of either the Curriculum Student Achievement, which would be Educational Services, the Finance, which would be Business Services, we're just trying to make the departments match the names of the committees so it makes more sense for people. Or the policy legislation... Human Resources, Rules of the Universe. We're getting lippy, it's 11. Okay, please let Amy know that you are interested.
By what date?
20...
By the 20 seconds. Very good, thank you. Okay, awesome. And that's okay with everyone. I see everyone writing it down and no one is opposed, so...
Send a reminder email.
Thank you. Alright, what do we have next?
We are 10D.
Go, kids.
And since I put this on the agenda, Ms. Factions, can I ask that we postpone this because of the time?
Yes.
Bring this back some other time.
That sounds great.
We can put it in the next meeting if we don't have time to...
Uh, D1 and 2?
D1 and 2.
Excellent. Any objections to those being moved?
No.
Okay, we are now on to superintendent search and the whole point of that being on here is asking if everyone is able to meet. My, I just stuck with the Monday date, so I went to the next Monday. We would start at 6:30 and we would have a conversa, I would hope we'll try for 6:30 to 8:30, but I'm not going to get weird about it right now. We need to talk about what we're going to do, what the next steps are and how we want to handle this from this point on. Yes?
And we would also be lumping in your items that you had requested special session about.
Yep, Lisa requested a special session, has five votes. So it will be posted as such. And then we have to add one more thing that we do. Oh, talking to the attorney about...
Board vacancy.
The board vacancy. So those are the three, so four major items. So we're not getting out of here by 8:30, just saying.
And that would be on June 16th.
What are the agenda items for the special meeting?
June 16th. Uh, what are the agenda items for the special meeting?
Transportation and food service.
Okay.
Those are closed session, right?
Yes. This whole thing will be closed session. Yes, Mr. Bumowski.
Recording, yes, no?
It's closed, so no.
Why would the discussion of the superintendent search be in closed session?
It's not, it's not the superintendent search, it's the evaluation.
We have, sorry, there are two separate conversations. We have to do...
It's, there's two separate things lumped in there. It's the discussing with the, how we're going to go about it and then also the evaluation that you've all completed.
So we can do the first part in open session?
So that should be taped.
That's the third, third Monday.
Yeah, that's a...
That's a bad day.
Yeah, that's a day I can't make.
She can't make.
Well, I, I can be there. I'll just be late. I'll be about a half an hour late.
Well, we had Monday or Tuesday initially and either one is fine with me. I stuck with Monday because it seemed to be easiest for people to be consistent. So is the 17th better for everybody?
Yes.
Better for me.
Take a vote. The 17th?
17th is, you know?
Yeah, the 17th is better.
I have to look at my calendar. 17th.
I think I should be good for that, 17th.
June 17th, which is a Tuesday.
Oh my God, Dwight would have...
We will be meeting at 6:30. We will...
I won't be able to be there for the closed session on Transportation and Food Service until probably 7:15.
She doesn't have a request for any administration, so it should be okay.
It's a night off, I guess.
We will, the first half hour, I will give it of the meeting, this is for anybody who wants to actually come, will be discussing the superintendent search, every portion of it that we can discuss in open session. There are portions of it that we would need to discuss in closed session. We will be covering the superintendent's evaluation, which has to be written, prepared and given by June 23rd and vetted by legal counsel. We have two closed session items by Lisa and we have to find out what to do with the board vacancy with legal counsel. And since legal counsel is there, we will do that in closed session. Yes?
You also came up in conversation to ask about, as long as we have them, about staff being on the committees.
Yep. I'm going to send him an email and see what his preference is, if he wants to be on the phone or if he just wants to send us a response.
Board vacancies, that should be in open session.
Yep. Well, except the attorney's on the phone. I think when the attorney's on the phone...
Doesn't matter.
Well, it...
Legal advice.
Yeah.
If he's on the phone, otherwise it might be just an email.
Right.
I have a question. What did you say about a special meeting?
Lisa called a special meeting?
You got an email, you responded to me.
Is that, is that special meeting about employees?
It's about the...
The email that you sent?
Yes.
And you're not going to have an administrator there? Is that what you just said?
Angel asked me if I needed any information prepared by the administration.
Okay.
And I said no.
Is there going to be administrator present with closed session discussion on employees? That's my question.
Do you want me to vet that with legal counsel? I... I don't even know what this is about. Okay, well, I didn't call it, it was called through the clerk.
Okay, well, I would like an explanation. You can do it through legal, but if we're going to be discussing closed session items regarding employees, I want administration here.
And he said, did you say you can't make it or you can't make it until later?
I, I couldn't make it till 7:15 or so.
And we start at 6:30 by the time we get through your, the search?
You have two open session items.
I think you would be here if, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just wanted the board to know.
I just, I, I didn't take it that you couldn't, you couldn't be here all night, just at 7:15-ish.
I just, I...
I'm sure we'll be long enough-winded to, to get you here. Trish and I will come up with questions.
Oh, man, that hurt.
Would you make a list? Well, does that even work for you then?
And it is the 17th, correct?
Okay, so 17th.
Okay. I thought about you, Trish, see? I just wanted you to be there.
So we are good with what's going on on the 17th? I can move to the next agenda item. Excellent.
Please do.
School board secretary position. Per the memo, we, about 18 months ago, split the position. We have our own secretary. We advertised it as a 20-hour-a-week position. It is not a 20-hour-a-week position. That is almost a big fat lie. Go ahead.
Why wasn't it posted that way? I mean, if we knew 18 months ago or ish, when we posted this for poor Amy, why wasn't that stated?
We assumed it would be about a, we, I mean, you were on the board with me at the time. We assumed it'd be about a 20-hour-a-week position. It really isn't and it consistently isn't. And I guess we didn't know if it was because we were having two board meetings a month or not. And it doesn't appear to be the case. It appears that we, as a nine-person board, produce enough work for a full-time employee of our own.
Go over there crying.
What I, let me finish and then go ahead. What I am asking is if we would like HR to come up with an idea of what it would be to employ someone full-time. We obviously would need to deal with benefits and that, all that sort of thing. I have, Amy, I think, did you attach your last...
Did not attach my last pay...
I have her last two pay things. She worked, I mean, in four days, she worked 28 hours on one of them. But we do special meet, I mean, it's, it's a lot and it's far more than we asked originally of someone who has a full-time job besides. So we need to consider making this a full-time position. The proposal is not to do that, it's to have HR look into what that would look like, how much that would cost and what the package would be. And then we can talk about if there's anybody that we're interested in doing it.
We would have to repost it. We would have to, unfortunately, Amy, we would have to repost it and it could look badly upon you either way what we make a choice of. But as long as I got the floor, I think, I don't think we need to make it a full-time. Could we make it, and again, this isn't good for, if someone's trying to make a living on it, do we have to do it a full-time position? Can we do it a 30 or 32-hour position? Mind you, I've been out looking for a job. No one wants to hire full-time because then they don't have to pay the benefits. Do we have to do it? Just saying.
Yep, Chris.
Is Sarah full-time?
Sarah's full-time, but when we made that switch, Sarah became the PR assistant, or halftime PR coordinator, because that position was cut, and, and my assistant, and we really believed that, that the board did too, I, I did as well, that the secretary position was not going to be a full-time position. But I think Angel's absolutely right. When we went to two meetings a month, and they were lengthy, and then all, and the board requests, the agendas and all that kind of stuff, it just has become-
I would agree with the recommendation. Have HR take a look at it.
Florence starts, our new HR coordinator starts on June the 23rd, and Florence starts on July the 1st. And we're in the middle of filling the payroll and benefits coordinator position, so it might take a little bit to do that.
Okay.
A little bit of time to do that.
I think at the moment, the conversation is a little bit more, do we all agree that we need to think about a full-time or a-
Something different.
More hours, if, if we go with Kim's suggestion. Yep, Alex?
With committees, I'm for, first off, what the employees should be getting, they should be getting, take care of them, make sure they have the hours they need to do the work they need. But with going into committees, does that change the amount of time that a board secretary would be here?
Depends on how many meetings a month you have.
Right. So I mean, if we commit to something and then it all of a sudden changes, we're still at 40 hours, and we don't need 40 hours, are we, is that going to be very poorly upon the board?
Well, three definitely.
My, my response-
Until maybe August to make the decision when we're flowing with committees?
Because of the position I've been, I've, I've had to kind of assess the year. I've got 10 months left. And we have to find a superintendent. We will probably look at the consolidated task force, restructure the entire district, and come up with an entire pay plan for our employees.
So the work is there.
We have a ton of work to do. And no matter what for the next year, our own employee would be a wonderful thing. After that, I think Barb expressed this too, but Amy too, she's doing everything she can in 75 hours in a pay period. It's, she could certainly spend more hours doing things. It's just that she's trying to rush it and get it done and cram it in. Would you, I mean, that's kind of what I've gotten from you. That, yes, there's plenty more to do.
Oh, yeah.
Lisa.
Could we look at, then, if we're making this a full-time position, for the, the board secretary to actually be the custodian of our records and fill the open records request and run the Skyward reports and stuff like that for us?
Totally.
Okay.
It would be awesome. Personally, I mean, I think it would be great.
Well, I think it would be. I absolutely do.
Okay. So what do we want to do? Yep.
My other question is, is when we had committees before, the board secretary wasn't there. We had secretaries from each department were the secretaries. So she wasn't, you didn't have to be there on that Monday. It was department heads came. Are we still going to do it that way?
I think it's a question to ask. I kind of put feelers out on it, and the, the general thought was, well, we know the information and we know what's going on because it's our department, like business, they know every, like, they can answer questions that maybe our own secretary couldn't, but it certainly doesn't matter to me. Yep.
I guess my comment to that is, we won't have to pay any overtime if we utilize her. Consistency-wise, you know, I, I would encourage us to use her as, you know, for the board, board meetings and the committee meetings, so that we're not-
You get a salaried position, there's no overtime then.
Absolutely.
I've got stuck with that job before.
Yes, Lisa.
The other thing, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I would like to see that this position is very flexible in that she doesn't have set hours, you know, other than the meetings. The, the rest of the hours are as she sees fit to get the job done, but-
Do you think that would be the most appropriate? I mean, I, I can ask to hear from you, right?
Sure, if you want.
Give us your two cents on this, please.
The flexible is pretty much what I do right now. I'm, I'm in before I go to work, I'm in on my lunch break, I'm in after, I mean, there hasn't been a Monday board meeting or not that I haven't been here or been working on something to be here for something else. We've pretty much had something scheduled every week.
But I'm just saying, you don't want to be, if HR comes up with this, do you want it to remain that you don't have set hours, that it's-
I would think that'd be best, because you never know when your meeting is going to be called. So if I'm a salaried position and you want me here at 8 o'clock on a Wednesday night, that would have to be compensated for someplace else to make that salary, you know?
Exactly, yep.
Comp time.
Thank you.
So do you need a formal motion to have HR investigate and put something together?
Um, consensus, is that what we want though? Because, Kim, I don't know, to your point, do we have to repost it if we go to a full-time position? Do we have to, or can we offer it to our own employee first?
We, yeah, I was going to say, I've already heard from community members when they saw this, how had they known about it, or, you know, that it was going to become a full-time job, they would have applied for it. The other thing is, there's the issue of, you know, yeah, so, no, I, yeah.
Okay, so we need to, we would need to repost, but we kind of want HR to put their feeler, or get an idea, but that's going to take a month, until, saying we don't have a new director till July 1st? Is that okay with everyone?
They have a lot to do.
I can begin to do it, I can begin to lay some groundwork for it. I, I think there should be a board discussion about what the duties are. I think Lisa brought up two areas that I think you should seek legal counsel on, custodial, custodian of the records and running reports that are, for example, financial or personnel in nature. I, I think that the board should have a full conversation about exactly what the duties of the board secretary should be.
Okay. Mike's going to get a long email from me. Duties. Okay, so consensus, yes?
Yes.
Start exploring? Okay, great. Board workshop requests, this is on here, we've had some requests for board workshops, but we, and they're listed A through E. We, Jeff and I thought it's smart to get an idea of what people really want on here, what the priorities are, because otherwise we are going to end up with a workshop every fourth Monday and be in the exact same position. So if we don't want to do that, then let's decide what our key things are and what we want to focus on this year. So the board superintendent authority versus delegation has been on forever in terms of talking about a workshop. I think a year that's been on there. The review of the 100 series policies, that can either be a board workshop, or the policy committee can calm that out.
I can go to the committees now, right?
Yep. Bye. Okay, strategic planning and community involvement, we agreed already to have Luanne Bird, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Come and just kind of pull that whole situation together for us.
Her board meets on the same, same nights as our board, so any Monday in between those would work, so.
Okay, got it. Skyward was a recent request by Lisa, kind of what the reports are that are available, 101, on what we can do with Skyward. And then the educational and financial priorities, that's kind of, it's kind of a very broad statement, but basically it's, let's sit down, let's talk about how much money we have, the things we need to get accomplished, and what our priorities are in order to get them accomplished, because we have a lot of big decisions to make, that are going to, all of them have money attached to them. Trish?
You know, just in looking at these, we've already made a decision that a couple of them are going to be, it sounds like presentations, and then go to committee, committee meetings, but letter E is the only, for me personally, letter E is the only one that I feel like should be a workshop. The rest of them, I don't think we need to spend that much time on it to be a designated workshop, but letter E, when it comes to the budget, yeah, that's, that's meaty.
Can I suggest that the Skyward thing could be voluntary, like we did with the technology thing? I don't know how many board members really want a presentation on Skyward, it's up to you to decide, but I'm making that recommendation. And just so that you know, Cabinet has begun to put together information for E, because what's going to come about here is the consolidated task force, that's going to be part of this. The financial priorities, aside from the consolidated task force, we're beginning to develop simply a master list of the board, for the board with dollars attached, and then you have salary and negotiations, which are obviously priorities as well. I suggested to, to Angel that that, because that area, this letter E is such a large area, it may require more than one board workshops. And if I can suggest that that not be scheduled in the next month or so, because we're gathering together information, the consolidated task force has to finish, we're going to have to get some information about salaries for you with employee groups and all of that, and I would recommend something in early August.
Okay, so you're talking about an, both the Carlson-Detman thing and the consolidated task force?
Well, I heard the board want to do something with the non-exempt employees prior to the start of the school year. Did I hear that right? I, I understood at the last meeting, and I don't know why I got this impression, but you wanted to do something for non-exempt employees, but the teacher compensation issue is going to continue being developed over this-
So the tier one you're talking about?
Yeah.
That Charlie came up with. So he's saying that from the presentation we just had, the recommendation of the, of that committee, which was to implement the first part about first-year T, or, the teachers who've been around for five years or less, get that implemented, right?
No, I, I said the non-exempt, that, that was all the other employees.
Got it.
That's what I believed.
Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't make any recommendations.
So what do we, let's decide now then, one, like, let's prioritize these? Do we want to pick the top five? Do we want to pick the top four? Do we want to decide what order we want to do them in? Kind of what are your thoughts? That's why this is on here.
I think we should think about it.
Other than B.
Other than that, right now.
We've got B out of there already.
I would agree with Chris.
Yeah, let, I mean, we know what you want now, but let us, give us some time to think about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can take B right out.
Yeah.
And we know that E should be a workshop, or at least that's the recommendation.
Right, exactly.
So now we really need to just figure out A, C, and D.
Exactly.
And thinking about it is a great thing, because we're not going to do anything before June 23rd, so-
It's always good.
That's kind of the gist of it, is you, we kind of see the body of work we have to accomplish between now and next April.
Right.
In general, obviously can go long beyond that. I'm thinking about the amount of work I need accomplished by next April. So the workshop's putting in place, because a new calendar will be developed after that, so that is where we are. Superintendent Performance Evaluation Process and Instrument, oh, that's a future agenda item, right? Yes, all these are.
We already did-
Future agenda items, we did, I have one through seven listed.
Can you list those, just?
I will. One is exit interviews. Two, staff morale plan. Three, contracted custodial services. Four, budgeted workshop, which is 11-2BE, or was on here. Five, instructional leader positions. Six, SPMAS athletics. Seven, transportation. So a couple of them are covered, but I have them written down anyway. Yes.
Negotiations for teachers.
Oh, just for teachers, Jeff, for all the employee, all the unions?
Teachers, only.
Okay. I need to read these fine statements about going into closed session. 19.85 parent one, parent E, 19.85 parent one, parent E, I only said that twice. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public